It is 5:01. I now call to order the April 20, 2020 Board Meeting of the Belton Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. A quorum of board members is present. On March 16th, 2020, Governor Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meetings, laws to the extent necessary to allow telephonic or video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus COVID-19. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, all board members are in attendance at this meeting by video conference. We are meeting by use of the Zoom software application. Members of the public may view and listen to this meeting through a live stream provided on the Belton ISD Board of Trustees YouTube website channel, excuse me. The link to the live stream is included on the meeting notice available on the district's website. An electronic copy of the agenda packet is available on the district's website at www.bisd.net under Board of Trustees Board Meeting Documents. The Zoom software application allows for people to view and interact during the meeting. We apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties and ask for your patience as we navigate unprecedented conditions. Members of the public were provided instructions on the meeting notice for providing public comment to be read into the record during the public comment portion of the meeting. Those who would like to provide comment at a future meeting conducted by video conference or telephone call should follow instructions on future meeting notices. All other meeting procedures will adhere to board adopted procedures to the extent practicable. A video recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. Questions about these suspended laws should be addressed to the Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787 or by email at toma@oag.texas.gov. At this point, we will be sharing a graphic of Mrs. Jeanette Kelly. We share this with you because we'd like to acknowledge her passing. She's a former board member, she's founder of Apple Tree and a staunch supporter of BISD. Our hearts and thoughts with the family at this difficult time. Please join me for a moment of silence and then we'll come back and do our US pledge and our Texas pledge. At this time, we will do our US pledge. A copy of the flag will be shown. Please remain seated. I pledge allegiance to the United
States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas
I pledge allegiance to the one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all. Next up on our agenda is public comments. As I noted a moment ago, to comment on an item on the agenda for today's board meeting, members of the public were instructed to submit their comments to be read into the record. Elizabeth, would you please read any comments that were received from members of the public?
No comments were submitted.
Thank you. Next slide of our agenda. We'll just move into our board workshop and committee reports. Dr. Smith will share with us the vision, mission, and goals of BISD.
Board members, welcome tonight. Thank you for participating in there. I am assuming this, I know that I'm new to the school district, but I'm assuming this is the first ever virtual meeting of the Board of Trustees in Belton ISD. And so we appreciate you and we need you to know we're very thankful for you and your flexibility during these unprecedented times. Some of the public might wonder why in these unprecedented times we're starting off with workshop items and we're talking about vision and future of BISD. And one of the messages that I wanted to make sure that we, as an administrative staff for sending is the business of the school district has to continue during all of this. We're about educating kids and we not only have to respond to the COVID-19 situation, but we also have to lead for the future. So these workshop presentations and the first one that I am kicking off tonight are really going to be very future oriented in some of the nature of the discussion. And I appreciate you all wading through that. We will get to COVID updates later in the agenda today. Next slide, please. So the purpose of this presentation tonight is to engage our Board of Trustees in some initial dialogue about developing goals for 2021 and to start talking about strategic planning and movement forward as a school district. As part of our discussions earlier this spring, we talked a little bit about how we can pull our community together and ensure that we are all focused on the same things moving forward as we continue to open new schools and as we continue to best serve the needs of each and every student. So tonight is an initial discussion with you in a workshop setting to get this conversation started. Next slide. So this is our current state, Belton ISD. One of the things that drew me here was the ability to have some things that are very soundly in place. Belton has a mission, a vision, and a motto that are clear to our community. We all know that motto every kid a winner and it's been around in Belton for a long time. The mission and vision are two things that are on our website and that are used on a regular basis in many of our publications. The mission to provide an education that challenges all of our students to excel. And then the vision to be a leader in preparing every student to excel in tomorrow's world. Next slide. And then we have six goals and I apologize that there's a heavy text on this slide. I'm not a, I'm not a heavy text kind of guy, but I thought it was important, especially in a virtual board meeting, to be able to put exactly what is up there right now for everyone. These six goals have been in Belton for quite an extended time and these goals are, one, and I will talk, talk about process and in procedures, the idea of implementing and monitoring processes throughout our system is really the idea of the first goal. The second one, to achieve success on the state's standards and the state's accountability system. The third is to make sure we're focused on human resources attracting and retaining high performing staff and to make sure that they're living up to the expectations that we have in Belton. The fourth one, a safe and supportive schools environment. Fifth one, shared partnerships. So partnering where it's really that idea of community engagement and partnering. And the sixth one, complying with all state and federal guidelines for our school system. So in a nutshell, those are the six goals that, from my research and from what I did before accepting this job, have been around in Belton for quite a while. I see these goals have actually been used in district improvement plans, campus improvement plans, et cetera. And it's a job of the superintendent and the Board of Trustees to come to a conclusion on what goals we need to focus on is in a school system for the coming years. So that covers our current state. If I could have you switch to the next slide, please. I want to talk a little bit about where we might want to go. As part of the interview process and coming into Belton ISD, one of the things that we talked a lot about is how we pull our community together and how we really make sure that we're all pointed in the same direction as we continue to grow. And there are a few things that I think are loud and clear that we need to engage in in our community at this time. And the first one is starting to have some discussions with our community about what the profile of a graduate is in Belton. And why this is really important is that if you think about the fact that we're opening up a second high school next year and it's a beautiful facility that's going to serve a great number of our students, but one of the things that we want to ensure is that both schools, both of our, excuse me, all three of our high schools are all focused on providing the experiences that get students to the endpoint, that idea of a profile of a graduate and that that profile is consistent amongst those schools based on the values of Belton ISD. The second one is reexamining what our vision really needs to be. As a Board of Trustees, one of the key things that you're tasked with is to help set direction for a school district. And that's really to talk about vision, mission, and goals of the school district. So we'd like to engage in some discussion before April 2021 of the vision and what we actually should be or could be, what that desired state is. The mission that we currently have and examining that as well. And lots of times, mission is referred to as what we're about on a daily basis, what that ambition is, what we're driving toward each and every day, what the calling is. And we want to either reaffirm the, the mission that is already there or tweak that as appropriate. One thing that we, I don't see that we have outlined in our system that I think is important to talk about as we go is what our core values are. And I think this is another role of the Board of Trustees is being able to talk with our community and come down to a few things that matter most in the way we behave, our operational agreements, what, how we treat people and what we really stand for and to identify those and call those out as a system. And then finally is the strategic plan. And eventually that plan is what is on a piece of paper and allows everybody to get to that vision or to strive toward that vision on a regular basis or on a number of years basis. So this is the idea of a desired state in about a year from now that I would hope to be able to see us at. Some of you might be rolling your eyes right now, even though I can't see you all on camera going, hey Matt, that sounds great, but we have this COVID-19 thing in place and this might not be realistic. Next slide, please. So I wanted to outline a little bit of a process on how we can get there and then I'll talk a little bit about why it's important now and then I hope to engage in some discussion with you. We have a, a May 6th workshop and a team of eight training coming up. And that is, we're going to hold that on May 6th. Despite this idea of us being closed, we have to conduct business virtually sometimes. So we're going to hold that team of eight training virtually. It's going to be facilitated by a TASB facilitator. And we do have to come up with some specific goals for the next school year. I want to be clear about this. This doesn't have to mean we throw out all the goals that we've done in the past and engage in a process in 20 days or less that redefines goals for us. If the Board of Trustees wants us to use the goals that we've had in Belton ISD, those six goals, and continue to use them for next year, we are very good with that. But it's an opportunity for us during that time and that workshop setting to be able to really focus on what goals we want to achieve for the upcoming year. During this next couple of months, we do think it's important to start to get some community input and have some discussions about what the hopes and dreams are for our students. Is part of a process to craft a profile of a graduate in a, in some idea of a vision of where we want to go. We want to hear from the community what is on their mind, what they really want us to achieve. And we can probably get those going in a virtual format sometime in the next few months. Over the next year, we would probably engage in some trustee discussions and workshops around that feedback about the vision values and the graduate profile that we could create and all of that. So imagine us gathering feedback from the community on some targeted questions, bringing that data back and having the trustees work through that in a workshop setting where we really talk about what the vision is, what the values are and what that graduate profile might need to look like so that you can help shape those things. Again, one of the key responsibilities that we know is entrusted with you as trustees and using some strategic planning, maybe after that, after we get the idea of a, a vision and a direction of where we go, where we pull in many community partners to help us plan the next few years along the way, eventually getting to the adoption of all of those things by the Board of Trustees. Next slide, please. This is just a graphic that summarizes and puts out a timeline of eventually what we might see in all of this. Next slide, please. But I think the big question that people might ask is why this? Why now? Some people, I think, will say that in the middle of a crisis that we need to be reactive and only focus on the current situation. And I hear that, we need to do that. We need to be able to react and, and do what is best for the kids in our system now. But I also think in those types of times, superintendents, boards, administrative teams would be remiss to not start to talk about what the future could and should look like. A process such as this would allow us to make sure that students are the focus of our work in Belton ISD. By really identifying that graduate profile helps us solidify those things that the board has communicated to me that's important to us all moving forward. Talking about the direction that we want to go and the values that you have and that we have as a community, I think is really important as we continue to grow and add people to the school district. One of the things that I heard loud and clear from our community so far is that we don't want to lose the things that makes Belton special. And so we need to identify those things and ensure that they remain in our system and ensure that they are a part of that. The board has a significant role in setting direction and we know, we've talked about that a little bit. Gathering community input, especially during times like this, I think is important. And let me say, on that community input, I think that we're at a really interesting time regarding learning and education for our kids. We have now been on an extended learning journey for a few weeks now. And while I think there are some people that would say, we want to go back to what we, exactly what we had before, I think there are a lot of people that would also say, we want to learn from the lessons that we've, we've encountered over the last few weeks and make learning even better for our students. Engaging our community in some input on that and our staff in some input on that, I think would help us in this way. Stability, we're going to need to, again, as we face some challenging times potentially coming up, I think we'll learn more about that in the next couple of months. But the economic impact of COVID-19 and the challenges that could be associated with all of this, we are going to need some stability in these documents and this planning process could provide us that stability as we navigate those things. The timing on it is important, I already mentioned. And then the key piece is decision making. We have, we're going to have some key decisions that we're going to have to plan for coming up, such as what we want staffing to look like in the future. And if we don't have those priorities clearly articulated and outlined, then those decision making challenges become much harder for us all. So last slide. I wanted to make sure I talked a little bit about this with you because we have this workshop coming up in a couple of weeks and we do have that facilitator coming in. The goal of that night will be simply to talk about 2021 goals that we need to have. And as I said, we have goals that are currently in place and we can adopt those goals and move forward with those goals. But I thought it would be very thoughtful and timely for us to really start to think about what the next year could look like in a planning process. And if we were to start to accomplish some of these things that we've laid out and talked about earlier this year, like a graduate profile, like a strategic plan, then we, we probably need to start engaging in these discussions now. So there are three discussion prompts that I gave you just to think through prior to that board workshop night. And I think that'll lead to some good fruitful discussion with our facilitator on May the 6th. What kind of questions, comments, thoughts do y'all have?
So Janet here. And so I don't know how many of my fellow board members have already done the Senate bill. Is it 56 training that we have to do? Is that the number?
1566, yes.
Okay. You know, we had the option, we can do it in the summer, assuming the summer training actually happens, or we can do it online at cost, at an additional cost. So I took that and it is not easy. It is long. They make you take quizzes throughout, but it is a lot of exactly what, what Matt's talking about here. So if you've done it, you already know that he's already pushing, pushing the envelope on what's already going to be required of all school boards across the state of Texas. So thank you, Matt, for leading that. And you know, I think the greatest part of all of this is, you know, involving the board and allowing us to have a voice because we do represent the community and, and letting us, you know, kind of look into some things that would be beneficial for our families and students. So one of my questions in regard to approaching this May 6th workshop or retreat, whatever we're calling it, retreat.
Virtual retreat.
In our very house, is if we have some thoughts regarding our goals, vision, different things, would you, would you want some of that stuff emailed to you in advance? Or would you, do you want to just save every single thought that we have on all of that for the meeting itself?
So I'll be honest, I'm, I'm meeting with a TASB consultant later this week and I want to ask her exactly that. She's much more skilled at the goal development process. And so I think that my gut tells me that she'll want it ahead of time and will gather it from you ahead of time. But we will be in communication with you in the next few days about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
And I don't know if Matt, if you don't mind me sharing this out, but that'll be Kay Douglas, Ty. Yes, we love Kay. We've had her here before. I just want to just reiterate what Janet just so eloquently stated. You know, it is nice that we've had goals, the same goals for a very long time and it's what makes Belton, Belton. But if this is a new day and it's time for us to take a look at that, to see what can be revamped and an opportunity to see what will thrust us into the future along with everyone else. We want to be aligned where we need to be. Does board, do you all have any other comments or questions for Dr. Smith at this point?
Yeah, I have one question. Matt, in looking at our consent agenda for the March 2nd, 2020 Policy Committee meeting, what you just talked about in your last slide is what we had discussed then. And of course, there was no report for that meeting because we got kind of sidelined last month with everything that's been going on. You had mentioned in our meeting about perhaps getting someone, some, some consultants to come in and talk to us. And we talked about board development and how we can become better, better educated about, about this process and how we can become more effective as board members. Have you had a chance to look into that? I know there's been a lot of this stuff going on.
I have. Just real quickly, yes. The question came up about, and I, I viewed it and I apologize, Manuel, if I viewed it wrong, but I viewed it kind of as two strands. One is the ability to have some people guide us as we create these foundational documents for the future of Belton ISD, right? So let's talk, let's take the graduate profile. Is there guidance that helps a board work through that and a community work through that to create some of these things? And the answer to that is yes. And I've reached out to two companies who have done it well and started picking brains about that. And what I would do in that case is, is we engage and talk about this as a Board of Trustees and a superintendent, we would secure the right support that we feel we need to help lead us through that process. In regards to board development on a couple of things, I have not jumped into that for a yet. I viewed Kay coming in. I, I've never worked with Kay before. I've worked with a lot of people at TASB before. Never worked with Kay, but I hear she is phenomenal. And I think her discussion with us on development of goals and then how we take those goals. And I kind of view the goals for this next year is we might be able to very clearly articulate it, two or three, maybe four transformational things that we want to do over the next year that are going to set us up for success for the future long term. And it really to be about that process. So I think my hope was to be able to say to Kay after that workshop on May the 6th, what would you recommend from TASB's point of view? How do we best support a board and their leadership and, and resource needs as they go through a process that we've outlined? So that's, that's the way I've approached it so far and hopefully I was kind of on target for you there.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? If not, we'll move on to our next topic item. And our presenters are going to be Michelle Box and I believe Mr. Bob Temple is going to help her with that. This is our spring demographic update. Welcome.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Board President McDonald, members of the board, Dr. Smith. It is our pleasure to be with you this afternoon. I am joined by Michelle Box. And this, these are incredible times, historic times. If you would, advance to the next slide. No doubt, the COVID-19 is having a huge impact on society, on the economy, on families and on school districts. And we are jumping in with all of our research expertise. And we are very fortunate to be a part of the, literally the largest housing research company in the country. We're a part of the Myers Metro Studies Research Team and we literally track 90% of all of the single family construction across the USA. And our chief economist is holding weekly webinars to share with us and with all interested parties what we're watching in the housing market. So we will be preparing an alternate to the projections that will be available mid-May. And what we're hearing right now is that builder traffic, sales traffic is decreasing. So no doubt, it's due to the shelter in place and it's due to the lack of traffic through those model homes and through those builders. So the builders are shifting a lot of their focus to their websites. But right now, because of the uncertainty around employment and jobs, no doubt, traffic is decreasing, sales traffic. With that said, we had a very strong January and February. Those were two of the strongest months on record for new home starts. So there was a tremendous backlog of construction. Fortunately, the builders are reporting a very low cancellation rate. So it is foreseen that all the homes that are under construction right now, there's a real good chance that those are going to be closed and those are going to be occupied with new families. So we are anticipating that while traffic is down and sales may be slipping because of the amount of homes that were under construction, the enrollment growth may not be slipping as dramatically as what we could see following the fall. Now I'll touch on that in just a few more minutes. But we are going to be, you know, following up with visits to the local builders, to the city of Belton and Temple. We've got great relationships with both those cities so that we can make sure we're seeing and watching what's happening with the local builder traffic through Temple and Belton. Next slide. Just a quick look at the enrollment picture, you know, this past, this past October, we had very good enrollment growth of about 305 students. So the fall-October enrollment was about 12,195 students. So we continued to see very strong growth year over year. Now we're tracking the largest two grades. You'll notice that the yellow cell in that table is the largest class and the green is the second largest class. So we do have a little bit of a wave that is working its way up through the grade levels. You can see this year's seventh grade class has been the largest class. Back last year, it was the sixth grade class, the previous year, the fifth grade class. So we know that the middle schools and the high school grades are going to be seeing some increased growth just due to the fact that we've got some really large class sizes that are working their way back up. Next slide. Just a quick look, this is a continued look at that enrollment change. That pink table in the middle of this forecast, this is looking at what we forecasted last year. So this time last year, when we presented the projections, we were anticipating that the district's enrollment this past October would be 12,261. So you can see, we came in at less than 1% off on the variance. I suspect that number is even closer to that 12,200 before spring break. But we were very close. We were a little bit off at those elementary grades. But we did see that first grade, second grade, fourth grade were a little bit less than we forecasted. But overall, we were quite pleased with the enrollment projections going forward. Next slide. Just a quick look at the economic picture. Now there again, this was done before the impacts of the COVID-19. This is, one thing that we can say about this is the economy was extremely healthy before the COVID-19. Now the COVID-19 is an exogenous effect or it's a effect similar to a natural disaster or a, like a hurricane or an event that was outside of our control. But prior to the COVID, the unemployment growth was very strong in the region. In fact, we had seen about 2.4% job growth in the Temple-Belton-Clean area. The national rate was only 1.3%. So job growth was good and healthy. The unemployment rates were at 50-year lows. This is an incredible thought to think about. Literally a month ago, we were talking about 50-year low unemployment rates being down below, you know, 4%. And now we're talking about 50-year high unemployment rates. It's just literally hard to imagine that it could swing that greatly. Most estimates right now are that the unemployment rate is likely going to be near 15% when it gets reported next. And we could see that reach as high as 18% in some areas. Now, the housing market across the Clean Temple MSA was also expanding. We were seeing more home sales. So the housing market was growing. That was, that January and February were two of the strongest months that we had seen for new home starts and new home construction in the region. Next slide. Just a quick discussion about the enrollment patterns across the state of Texas. Here's a map of Texas school districts. We've got over 1,000 school districts in Texas. You can see, we've had very consistent year-over-year growth. In fact, for many of those years, between 2010 and 2015, we were growing anywhere from 60,000 to 80,000 kids per year. And then starting in 2016, the growth rate started to slip, started to drop a little bit. That was a function of those millennials. They weren't quite having children as fast or as young as the previous generations. But back in 2018, the growth rate actually dropped to 32,000. But this past October, the growth rate jumped back up to about 62,300. That was the annual change from the previous year. So this past October, we had about 5.49 million students in Texas schools. Those darkest green areas are where we see the highest concentration of growth. You can literally drive a, draw a line down I-35 and you can see the impact between Dallas-Fort Worth, between Temple, Colleen, Belton, through Austin-San Antonio. That makes up some of the largest growth rates in the state of Texas, in the central areas of Texas. Next slide. Now, looking specifically at Region 12, we've kind of zoomed in there and we've outlined the Belton School District in blue. And the five-year growth pattern between 2014 and 2019, the district added about 1,644 students, which makes the Belton School District the second fastest net-growing school district in Region 12, behind the Colleen School District. Next slide. Now, just touching on the housing market, we do look at housing in a couple of forms. We do interview the builders and developers. We also look at the multiple listing service data. We look at deed transaction data. We look at the city of Belton stats. We also look at the city of Temple stats. And you'll notice a couple of highlights from this. The median price was continuing to go up. So the median price in the city of Belton was about 210,000. So housing in the city of Belton is a little more expensive than the housing that's in the city of Temple. Now, we did see a little bit of a reduction of listings. And we will see that continue to decline because one of the things we're witnessing from sellers today is that because of the COVID virus, they are pulling their homes off of the market for fear of having that traffic through their homes. So we are seeing a reduction of the number of homes for sale, the existing homes for sale. That's going to help the new housing market because any of the inventory homes or the spec homes that they may have built will still be under high demand because of the shortage of supply that we're anticipating from the existing sales market. Next slide. When we look at the Temple stats, now a little bit of an increase in the sales, the yearly sales rates and the average sales price. But you'll notice the median price is $170,000 in the city of Temple. So it is a little bit less expensive in the city of Temple. There again, a majority of the new housing that's in the city of Temple is in Belton ISD. So that is the preferred area is city of Temple with, but it's Belton ISD because of the quality of the school district and the reputation that you have. There again, we've also seen a reduction in the number of listings and we do expect that to continue. Normally, this time of year, we see the number of listings increase as sellers are trying to, you know, get their homes ready to sell in the spring and over the summer so they can plan their moves during the summer. Next, next slide. This is also looking at the Belton ISD. It's a yearly history of new homes, existing home sales, foreclosures and REO, which is bank-owned sales. And you'll notice some interesting things about this bar graph is when we look back in 2010, 11, we were only building about 300 new homes per year. And the foreclosures and the bank-owned sales were a much higher share of the total sales. Now, the foreclosures and the bank-owned sales had virtually gone away as of 2019. And one thing that's going to be very different about this economic crash that we're experiencing right now, there is a tremendous amount of stimulus that's being poured into families and into businesses to try to help sustain those families and to sustain the businesses. And we're also seeing a lot of forbearance from the mortgage institutions. So we are not likely going to see an increase in foreclosures and bank-owned sales for the next two to three months due to the mortgage industries and to the multifamily owners not wanting to go through the evictions or the foreclosures. Now, those mortgage institutions can only do that for about two to three months. So it will be very important that we do get some traction back in the economy in short order because they won't be able to avoid the foreclosures once we get beyond about three months. Next slide. Average prices. You'll notice that the average price for a new home in the Belton School District in 2010 was about 181,000. And it has steadily increased up until about 2018, when it has settled in at about $240,000 for a new home in Belton ISD. And the average price for an existing home sale has gone from 175,000 up to about 231,000. Now, right now, what we're hearing from the builders is they are holding those prices pretty steady right now. But over the next couple of months, should they have any trouble moving their inventory, we will start to see some drop in prices. But I think we've still got another month or two before we could see that. Right now, they're trying to entice them with incentives. So it's the incentives that they're using to try to, to help motivate those buyers to go ahead and commit to their homes. Next slide. Now, this was our original forecast on the housing picture for Belton ISD that we did back in this past fall. And you'll notice the blue bar represents the amount of new housing that the district had seen over the last four-year period. You'll notice in 2018, 19, 700 new single-family homes in the district. The 2019, 20-year, we'd seen it drop to just a little bit under 700. We were actually forecasting that new homes within Belton ISD was going to exceed 800 new homes and then get as high as 900 new homes per year in 2021 and 2022, then possibly start to drop off a little bit. That was because of the new developments that we were seeing within the district. You know, Three Forks is doing well. There's several of those new developments around, you know, the Purtle Zone. And so we had several areas that we were watching. And with our interviews with the builders and developers, we were looking at a situation where the growth was going to likely, the growth of new homes, jump up over 800. Now, we're going to be working on a revised model of this that we will have ready by the mid-May. But right now, what we're hearing and witnessing is we could see a reduction of about 20 to 30% of this new home forecast just because of the consumer concern, consumer confidence, some impacts on job loss. But we could be seeing this slip as much as 20 to 30%. And there again, we're going to have that ready midway. We're racing with our team to get as much of the housing information and start to work on these. We're literally doing these for all of our clients that we did work for this year. So it's a pretty big undertaking for our task right now, for our team right now. Next slide. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Michelle. Michelle has been a co-partner with me on the Belton project. We've both been working hand-in-hand on Belton for the last several years. Michelle is one of our outstanding research and consultants. She's got a real clear picture of what's going on with the housing in Belton ISD. And she's going to jump into the details about some of the housing that we're seeing within your school district.
Thank you, Bob. So this slide here is your housing overview. I know we've shown this a couple of times to you guys. Those green polygons are going to be your active subdivisions. So that is actively home building. And any yellow polygon is going to be your future subdivision. So these are areas that we're tracking that have preliminary plans or concept plans in that we know are land that could be developed in the next roughly three to five years. So right now, we're counting about 2,000 lots that are available to build on within the district today. And still about 4,700 future lots, and again, in kind of various stages of development. Some of those are existing neighborhoods that still have future phases left to go. And some are brand-new subdivisions that are going to be coming online soon. Next slide, please. So these are just a few kind of quick highlights on some of your biggest playing subdivisions right now. So starting up at the north in the Tarver Elementary Zone, the Northgate subdivision. This outline is actually kind of the second phase, just across the middle schools, the original section, and about 130 lots in Northgate. That's, those lots have built out at this time. So this section has about 514 total lots in it, 185 still left to build on. About 47 occupied at this time. They do have some groundwork underway on some future phases. And they've been building about 30 to 40 homes a year. A price point is a little bit higher in this Northgate subdivision. They're starting at about $270,000. And you can see there that there is a star for a future school site that was acquired by the district. So that's land where a future school could be built, that purple star across the Northgate subdivision. A little bit south in where Tarver Elementary is located is the Westfield subdivision. Over 1,000 total lots planned in that subdivision, still about 270 future lots to go. That activity has really picked up across the street from Tarver. They've been building about 75 homes a year and we've definitely seen that activity pick up. There's a small section there that does fall outside of the district. But I know they're, they're in communication to potentially make a deal with Temple Independent School District on where those students could go. That price point was starting at about 120, but kind of average price in there is about 170 to 185. Over in the Lakewood Elementary Zone, the Grove at Lakewood Ranch, 600 total lots, 300 future lots still remaining. 165 are occupied. They've also been building about 35 to 40 homes a year in the Grove at Lakewood Ranch. Next slide, please. So also in the Tarver Elementary Zone is Lake Point subdivision, 710 total lots. They're nearing buildout. They're going to be built out of those lots in the next, about this time next year is when they anticipate those final homes to be occupied. They've been building over 100 homes a year for the last several years. This has been such a great product for this development that they actually went ahead and purchased the land directly to the south of them. So this Lake Point Terrace is 636 total lots. They just delivered the late, late part of 2019 and started their first homes in December. And they were hoping to have their first residence here this, this spring and this summer. So we are going to be keeping an eye on that Lake Point Terrace and reaching back out to them with this COVID-19 impact and seeing when they're going to anticipate their first residence. Those homes were already started and on the ground. So as Bob mentioned, that kind of inventory product is going to be really desirable, especially for its proximity to the school and just this really kind of desirable north section of the Belton Independent School District. Next slide, please. Hills of Westwood, moving just a little bit south into Purtle Elementary, 913 total lots, that 340 future lots still planned. They have over 400 homes occupied. They've been building about 45 to 50 homes a year. That's a Keela Homes development. And they, their price point sitting at about 180 to 240. Next slide, please. And again, further south, Three Creeks Development down in Chisen Trail. This has really been one of the biggest driving subdivisions in the Chisen Trail Elementary School's growth. 1,500 total lots, 830 still remaining to be built. They have 137 vacant developed lots. They delivered a new section late last year. And they've been building about 100 to 125 homes, so also building more than 100 homes a year very consistently. And this has been a D.R. Horton product. It's been very popular and, and it's yielding fairly highly, which I'm going to show you here in just a minute. So that price point is about 190 to 290. And they do have some custom home lots that sit a little even higher price point than that. And finally, that Hubbard Branch subdivision. I know we've been talking about this for a while, 500 future lots planned. Groundwork was just finishing on their first phase of 170 lots. So they were hoping to pull their first permit here this month. So again, these are the kind of things that could potentially be slowed slightly because of some backlogs at the city and some of their social distancing and working from home. Cities are having a little bit harder time getting those permits issued. But they, they are planning on having their first home completed kind of late this summer, early, early fall. So we were expecting some first kind of students out of Hubbard Branch into the Miller Heights Elementary School this fall. So that's one as well that we will be watching closely to make sure for that, that Miller Heights Elementary forecast. Next slide, please. So this is a map of your student density. Each of those dots represents a geocoded student to the address that they reside at. So we have geocoded 450 students that reside outside of the district. And just to be clear, this can include transfer students or teacher students or administrative students that are, that are brought in because they work in the district. So that's about 3.7% of the total student population that actually resides outside of the district. That's a fairly healthy portion of the, of the student population. So of those out-of-district students, more than half live within the city of Temple. So that just kind of shows where the majority of those out-of-district students are transferring into the district from. We did see that about 36% of students within, that live within the Belton Independent School District do live within Temple city limits and about 31% live within Belton city limits. So I know we'd always kind of talked historically, we were before you a couple of years, how that split was really a 50/50, was quite even between the city of Temple and the city of Belton. But because of the new home activity up in the, in the northern part of the district and the city of Temple, it is just starting to grow that little bit faster than the city of Belton. Yes.
Okay, quick question. These persons add up to 100?
Correct. So these are of the students that are within the district and it's within the city limit. So there are some incorporated portions of the district that do not fall within the city limit.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so these are, yes, I'm sorry, thank you. That's, that's a good clarification. These are just students that reside within city limits. So again, 31% reside within the city of Belton and then 6% reside within the city of Morgan's Point Resort. Next slide, please. So this is looking at the student yield based on the housing type. So your overall single-family yield across the district is about a .61. This is a, this is a really strong yield for a single-family home. This means that roughly for every 10 homes built, we could expect six students to be added to the district. Typically, most of our clients, we say a kind of average yield is about a .4 to .5 for single-family. So .6 shows just the desirability of the school district. People are definitely moving here with their kids. They want to put them in the school district. So you're seeing that in that student yield. The multifamily yield at this time is about a .29. You can see here that that was actually dropped in recent years. It was sitting about a .38 a couple of years ago. The majority of that decline is due to new units coming online. It's not necessarily students leaving existing units. It's more units are coming online that's at higher kind of luxury market rate apartments that have been built in the last couple of years. And that caused the overall yield to decline because those newer complexes are just not yielding as many students. Next slide, please. So this is the yield by active subdivision. So we wanted to go ahead and drill down just a little bit further. So we talked about that .6 yield for single-family homes. But there is a difference between different products and different portions of your district and how those are yielding. So you can see in those, each of those active subdivisions, we've actually assigned a student yield to. So in the Tarver Elementary Zone, at Lake Point subdivision, we said it's a really popular, building more than 100 homes a year. It has a yield that's over .8. So we're seeing not six students per home, but eight to nine students per 10 homes built. So it's a really strong student yield. You can see in that Westfield subdivision and Northgate, Tarver is one of the highest yielding new home elementary zones. So that's really resulted in faster-growing elementary zones. I can also see in Chisen Trail, the Three Creeks subdivision yielding between a .4 and .6. So we're seeing really, really strong yields in the northern part of the district and those faster home communities being built. Next slide, please. And this is your multifamily yield. So each of those dots represents an existing apartment or manufactured home community. This does include both. So we, we track 760 students that reside in about 2,600 units across the district. So there is quite a difference between your, you know, we lump these all as multifamily, but there is quite a difference between apartments and manufactured home communities. So the average apartment yield is about a .25 and the average manufactured home yield is about a .5. So the manufactured home communities do yield more students than those existing kind of traditional market rate apartment complexes. Next slide, please. next slide please
well thank you Michelle
pass it back to to Bob here yeah
thanks Michelle one of the things we look at is the transfer patterns in and out of the district this is a report that we get from the Texas Education Agency that top table represents the students that are transferring into the district and you'll notice that we were showing the T E A was showing about four hundred and seventeen and a vast majority of those are coming from Temple I S D second highest area is coming from Colleen I S D with a hundred and twenty-one and you can see that's been consistently above four hundred students for the last three years now the bottom table is the transfer out totals and we're just showing you the highest school districts and the highest charters that are transferring out you've got a much bigger list but we've kind of shortened the list but then given you the totals this past October the transfer out actually did increase to five hundred and fifty-four so we did see a a little bit of a surge at IDEA Public Schools so there's a IDEA Charter School that's opened recently that has drawn out about thirty-eight students from Belton I S D we continue to see priority charter schools bounce around between eighty-four sixty-two and eighty-three and then you do have about seventy-nine kids that are transferring out to Temple but the total transfer out is about five hundred and fifty-four transferring out versus about four hundred and seventeen transferring in next slide this is looking at that transfer data in just a little bit different form it's a bar graph and you can see in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen and sixteen we were transferring in more students than we were transferring out and then back in two thousand and seventeen that's when the transfer patterns flipped just a little bit and you know starting in two thousand and seventeen transferring out a few more students that are transferring in and that number got just a little bit further apart in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty now just to give you a little perspective on this we work with about a hundred school districts and a majority of those are in the major metroplex areas of Dallas, Fort Worth, Austin, San Antonio, Houston and a majority of our suburban client school districts are literally on the negative side of the transfer pattern by as as much as fifteen hundred to two thousand students negative so even though your bar is a little flipped on the negative out to negative end it's still much, much better than what we see with the majority of our clients next slide now this is looking at newcomers and leavers now we slice and dice the data several different ways to try to understand the patterns that are taking place newcomers are when we compare the recent student data file to the previous year's student data file and we are looking for new student IDs that are in grades first through twelfth when we see a new student ID that wasn't present in last year's student file of kindergarteners and eleventh graders we code that as a newcomer and the leavers are the opposite of that now there again you can see that historically the district has far more newcomers than they do leavers but we did see that kind of the gap or the distance between the newcomers and leavers get a little closer this year when we saw that the newcomers was about fifteen hundred and the levers got up to thirteen hundred and sixty-four next slide now this is looking at the forecast at the grade level there again we're going to be producing a alternate forecast that's going to be available in mid-May but we were anticipating that we were going to see an increase in the growth rate we were anticipating that the next year enrollment growth would be about three hundred and eighty students which would put next fall's enrollment at about twelve thousand five hundred and seventy-six there again we were anticipating about eight hundred new homes and then you'll notice that starting in two thousand and twenty-four when we get to that five-year number we were looking at about fourteen thousand two hundred and twenty-six students in the district in five years so over two thousand students of growth in the next five years and if you'll remember during the last five years we grew about sixteen hundred students so we were accelerating the growth just a little bit compared to what we had seen in the past five years next slide next we're looking at at the campus level and you can see the elementary enrollment projections and the yellow is when the campus exceeds the capacity you'll notice that the the growth kind of lines up with where the housing growth is taking place you'll notice that Chisholm Trail this past October had about seven hundred and ten students and we have it getting over eight hundred students by the two thousand and twenty-two school year and Tarver Elementary School gets over eight hundred students by two thousand and twenty-three and you'll notice in five years for the two thousand and twenty-four year we could have three elementary schools that would be exceeding capacity and that Leon Heights is just surging just a little bit it's not necessarily because of a lot of housing growth it's just some growth that we're seeing in some of those younger grade levels but it's also not a very big elementary school so it doesn't have much buffer space when you have some large class sizes coming up next slide now back up one I needed to talk about the secondary campuses we're missing slide forty-one or I'm not saying slide forty-one let's see okay it's actually slide twenty-seven not sure where that slide went to but I'll just tell you what's happening at the secondary level you know this next year we're opening Belton Middle School so we will go to four middle schools this next school year in fact Belton Middle School would be at about seven hundred and fifty students South Belton Middle School would be at almost six hundred students North Belton Middle School would be at about nine hundred and forty students Lake Belton Middle School would be at about seven hundred and thirty-nine students the Lake Belton High School opening with just the I believe it's just the two grades would be at about eight hundred and thirty-eight students Belton High School there it is okay so there it is you can see the four middle schools would be at about three thousand twenty-nine students combined and that Belton Middle School is going to have about seven hundred and fifty-three students your largest middle school is going to be North Belton Middle School at about nine hundred and forty-three students you'll notice that we stay within the capacity through about two thousand and twenty-six and that's when it could likely North Belton Middle School would exceed the capacity your new high school Lake Belton High School opening next year with about eight hundred and thirty-eight students there may be some transfer shifting that may need to be accounted for so that's the ideal number the maximum number could be at about eight hundred and thirty-eight and Belton High School will open with will not open but will have about twenty-three hundred students you'll notice it starts dropping significantly and that's just because it will be losing that full load on the grade level the junior and senior class so Lake Belton High School in two thousand and twenty-one will have ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders and in two thousand and twenty-two that's when Lake Belton High School would have all four grades I'll summarize then be ready to answer some questions so next slide key takeaways definitely Belton should experience continued growth we see that even with these economic recessions that fast-growth districts they don't stop growing they just slow in their growth so there is the chance that our enrollment growth could slow but we don't see it being a total stop of growth home sales in Belton have nearly doubled in the last ten years so we do expect the overall trend once we get this covid nineteen behind us is to see continued housing growth the district has more than two thousand lots available to build on and more than four thousand seven hundred future lots so the future does look strong for new housing within Belton I S D the district is expected to add about two thousand students over the next five years and about thirty-eight hundred students in the next ten years I'd be happy to answer any questions
does the board have questions at this time
yeah I've got a quick one but I don't know that it's for demographic people and so it has more to do with some of our reasons for changes in numbers and things like that and tracking some of that
opportunity to go ahead and put the question out there and for the staff that's listening they can address those
okay so you know one of my questions is when you look at the numbers from freshman to senior year we usually we're having you know consistently over a hundred almost two hundred students drop off from freshman to senior year do we have a a tracking system or a reason for that I'm sure Deanna or somebody can probably answer that for us
can I chime in just real quick there is a common phenomenon that happens at virtually all high schools and we see that what happens is those freshmen don't quite get enough credits in that freshman year or to to become sophomore so they pin up there just a little bit it is not necessarily a Belton issue I literally see that type of cohort slip at all high schools in Texas so it's 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 a it is a high school phenomenon it's not specific to Belton has been my observation
thank you Bob
I if I could jump in Madam President real quickly I'm I think addressing both of those and I I don't know if we have a way to track some of those things I can tell our board and I will be honest with our community too and we saw this as an administrative team last week the concerns that I have are our number of transfers out and trends that I see and our number of students that we lose at the high school level I can tell you I agree with Bob and based on my experiences in other districts in Texas I do know that you do see that trend in other districts I will also say that I don't think that's a reason for us to not explore what those reasons are and to try and make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students as we get into a little bit later presentation I'm going to talk a little bit about the student experience and I think this type of information is critical for us as a leadership team and for you as a board of trustees to help us focus on meeting the needs of each and every student in our system so I appreciate the the question Janet and I need you to know as an administrative team we're concerned about the same things you are
thank you any other questions now Bob and Michelle thank you again for as always for giving us this great information and as you all know we are a fast-growth district and this helps with that preparation and planning for the future because they clearly are building new homes and new families are coming and we want to make sure we have those nice buildings ready for them that are safe and just available so thank you again for giving us that information
you're welcome thank you for allowing us to to assist you
Madam President can I add one more thing real quickly I think it's important just to point out and I I just want to clarify and the board can help me clarify on this I just want to make sure that our public knows and understands that in the maps that Bob and his team provide when it says future school site that those decisions have not been made we do own land in those areas but those decisions have not been made to build a school on that site at this point am I right in assuming that
yes that's wonderful thank you glad to clarify that I had to stop and ask myself that question did I miss something thank you
thank you
so if there's nothing further on that particular topic we will move on to Ms. Jill Ross is going to talk to us about Lake Belton High School April update
hello everybody thank you for thanks for letting me come and talk to you about Lake Belton High School tonight and we are in kind of an unusual circumstance and one of the most frequently asked questions to me is what's happening out there what's going on with Lake Belton High School and so I appreciate the opportunity to tell you guys what we are doing we are things are going quickly and if you look at this picture you can see this is our commons our dining commons things like the ceiling fans are in the ceilings in and so it is moving along very, very nicely and I want to draw your attention to the three words that are on that wall and if we could have the next slide please pride, community, and trust are the three words that are actually forming the work that we have all been doing on the Lake Belton High School side and this project is a pretty massive undertaking without Dr. Smith and his leadership team's support and the hard work from purchasing communications the curriculum instruction department, H R, and Mr. Bennett's construction expertise we would be unable to get this done and so I want to take a second and thank them for their work and their dedication to making this campus ready to go whenever we open in the fall so I want to say thank you to them next slide please the first thing that we are doing is we are working to build pride in Lake Belton High School and the emphasis for this pride has been student voice from the beginning and if you will recall in last year we had students who came and presented to you and told you about some of the historical design elements that we were including in our campus and the reason that we included those elements was to give students a wayfinding opportunity or some ways to see where they were and to get themselves oriented in in the place of the building in the fall we worked at putting the foundation together for pride as a Bronco and one of our first activities that we did was we gathered band students together and let them help us pick the band uniform they helped narrow down the the choice for the fight song and then I met with other students both at Lake Belton Middle School, Belton Middle School, and then at the nine to let those students hear those options and we narrowed down and chose a fight song we thought we were going to be having a series of fun things called Bronco Roundups throughout the spring but we did have one and that was in March at the beginning of March before spring break and we announced which band uniform we chose we sent we let students and families hear the fight song and when we did that we followed up with publicizing that information on social media as well obviously the plans for future Bronco Roundups have been kind of slowed a little we've had to make sure that we are creative and figure out how to get student input and interact with our students in order to continue to build that pride and not let the work fall behind and so I don't know if you if any of you saw it but we had students who got together virtually with their choir teacher Mr. Livingston and they produced our very first publication of our school song and so that was really fun to see those kids and to see their parents' comments whenever we posted that music onto our campus social media pages and so that was really fun but it was a way to interact with students and with with our families and we also are working hard to build pride with our families and with our students by getting their input so we've been having we've had three Zoom meetings virtual meetings with some of our students and asked them what do you what do you want from Lake Belton High School what are you dreaming about what are your best hopes and so that's been interesting conversations I actually sent out a a link for kids to sign up to be a part of future conversations and I have almost sixty kids who've said I want to join in and I think that's important having their their voice heard is very important next slide please so this is the student entrance of Lake Belton High School and this is where our kids are going to come in on a daily basis and it looks different than the last time that you may have seen it on a social media post or even on our website I need to adjust our banner picture because we have grass and we have trees and so we really are working to continue to build our building and make it look like a build make it look like a school and so with pride what we know is that pride is going to give our students confidence and self-respect because they're a member of the group because we are Broncos and that's different but that's not bad that's great and it we're still members of the Belton community we're still members of the Big Red community but we are Broncos next slide please so the next piece of our work has been building a community and to do that as I said before we had these great plans of Bronco Roundups but what we have transitioned into are virtual Roundups and so later this week on Wednesday we will be pushing out our latest Roundups. And so later this week, on Wednesday, we will be pushing out our latest video that gives people insight into what's happening within the building. As people drive by, they can see the grass, they can see the trees, they've seen pictures of the baseball, football, softball fields. But we wanted to give them insight into what's happening within the walls. And part of the reason was because our students have been asking, what's it look like in there? And so we're wanting to answer their questions. And so Wednesday is going to be our special April Bronco Roundup. And we're excited about that. We're also interacting with our families with our hashtag parties. And what that really is, is it's just on our social media platforms, we've had different hashtags and images that we have posted. And an example was when we had Bronco Clean and we in we introduced our our lyrics to our fight song and encouraged people to sing the fight song as they wash their hands, because we want to make sure that we're all washing our hands appropriately. And so that was another example of how we're building community. And what was fun was to see our athletic staff who were hired by that time participate and to join in on the fun and introduce themselves. And that builds a camaraderie among them and around our community as well. If you'll notice, we, in this middle picture, we allowed our families to help us name our mascot. And so we have a special delivery coming in the summer. We're excited to have our Bronco mascot blaze be introduced to our community when we actually get the costume. But we're excited about that. And I think our families were excited to participate in that as well. And then that last group is our staff. We don't want to forget to build that camaraderie among our staff. We were able to meet as a group in February, those who were hired by that time. And they got to have a good time. We took a bus tour to the parking lot of Lake Belton High School because we couldn't go in because it's an active construction zone. But they were excited to have that opportunity to spend time together and to see what was going on. We also have included a little storyboard that they are all introducing themselves to each other, and we're excited about that. And then finally, I wanted to let, give you a little hiring update. We have about 13 vacancies remaining. I'm working pretty hard at getting those taken care of. Next slide, please. We've always said that we want our campus to be kind of like a family. And it really is a community where we're building that trust and looking out for each other. Next slide, please. And so the next thing that we need to build is trust. Trust is not something that's built quickly. Trust takes some time and it takes a lot of effort. And so we are building a foundation of trust. One of the previous slides that I didn't really point to was actually a picture from the Temple Daily Telegram. And it had a representative from Bartlett Cock, as well as one of the police officers from Temple PD. And we walked that building in the early, early part of the winter so that they could see what the building looked like in without walls. And then actually, last week, our Temple PD School Resource Officer and his sergeant and I walked the building again to build that camaraderie and build that 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 community of working together and to build trust. And we wanted to make sure that we're always focusing on the team. One of those pictures, the picture that's a little boat's kind of hard to see, but that's one of our wayfinding pictures. That's a historical image. And the reason I put that on this slide is because probably around the beginning of March, there was a social media post and a student who is at one of our middle schools replied about being scared. And so I reached out to that student's counselor and asked that counselor to visit with that kid just to see why were they afraid? And it was really about the size of the building. I'm scared to go in this building. It's so big. And so it was a great opportunity for that counselor, that student, and me to have a conversation and just to reiterate to her, we're all going to be new together and we're going to make this great and it's going to be just fine. But I think it was important for that student to know that somebody cares and somebody's looking out for what that student was afraid of. Right before spring break, we had no idea what was going to happen. We didn't have a clue that this was work, that COVID was coming to this level. And we didn't realize that we would be closed in this way. And so we've had to work differently, but not to let Lake Belton kind of fall by the wayside. We want to keep it relevant. Next slide, please. And so pride, community, and trust are more than just words that are on the wall. They really are forming the work that we're doing. It's our commitment to our students. It's our commitment to our families, our staff. It's our commitment to you as our leaders and to Dr. Smith and his leadership team. And so I just wanted to take a moment to tell you a little bit about what we've been doing and to see if you have any questions that you would like for me to answer.
Does Ward have any questions, comments?
Hey, Jill.
Hi.
Hey, John Boy and I went out yesterday and walked around the whole campus. The gates were all open. We had full access to everything. And he was so excited and impressed, and so was I. It looks really great. And we're just so proud and happy for you guys and glad you're in charge of this, by the way.
Well, that's very kind. We're excited. We can't wait to get get this thing open.
And Jill, I just wanted to share with you, I'm so proud of you. You've just have handled this in such a caring and thoughtful way. Even though we are in COVID-19, you couldn't tell it by the things that you all are posting, the things that you are doing. Yes, it's different and it's an on, it's an online process, but it's different and it's working. So thank you for what you all are doing. It's so sweet. I mean, when I saw that delivery, special delivery coming, it was like, oh, wow, I can really wait to see it. I'm excited.
Great. Thank you.
You did a great job. Thank you so much for that.
Thanks.
Suzanne, I have to echo just y'all, you watch, Lake Belton High School is going to be outstanding. And a lot of it's due to the leadership that Jill Ross is is displaying during this time right now. And I'm, I'm excited for our students at Lake Belton High School, at Belton High School, at Belton New Tech, and how they all work together. That that team of principals is pretty special. And I'm really excited to see what's going to happen for all of our students.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Okay, so we're gonna, next item on our agenda is our policy committee report. Mr. Manuel Alcoz, will you go ahead and update us, please?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to speak with my fellow trustees and of course, Dr. Smith about our meeting that we had on April the 8th, 2020. This issue is probably quite sensitive to a very few. And probably not so sensitive to the mass, the vast majority of our student body. It's probably going to be a moot point to them. And our discussion centered around EIC Local, addressing class rank and GPA. And the question is, what do we do? What do we do with the freshmen, juniors, sophomores as it relates to the calculation of GPA and class rank, determination of class rank? Do we include the entire semester, the spring semester? Or do we provide those students with a pass fail at the end of the semester? Or do we do like, we address the seniors? And of course, the seniors, their GPA and their class rank, notwithstanding dual credit, is determined by the end of the basically, spring break. Fortunately for the seniors, this situation that we have with this pandemic occurred rather timely when we, when we had to exit the schools. So we're going to include that third nine weeks for the seniors as provided in the in the policy is written. Now, Deanna's report is on page 27, begins on page 277 of our agenda. And I don't know that I'm going to fall in line with with the recommendation. We discussed it, you know, Rosie Montgomery, Chris, Chris was also present. We discussed this, but we didn't necessarily lean one way or the other. One of the things that Rosie brought up during the course of the meeting was, let's look and see how it's going to impact the students. Can we do a statistical analysis? Well, Deanna looked into that. And unfortunately, it's going to take quite some time to do that. It's gonna, it's going to require us bringing an expert in and doing a very stringent statistical analysis to come up with some, some data points. So that probably is not going to be a feasible alternative for us in terms of guiding us and helping us make a decision in this case. And this is something that I want to hear from all of you about it. Because it is going to be so sensitive to a few of our students in our schools, because GPA is obviously very important, and so is class rank. Now, I want to tell you why I'm leaning towards simply including that, that third nine weeks in the in the calculation of GPA and the calculation of class rank and getting away from this pass fail. One of the things that Deanna brought up during our meeting, which I think is a very valid point, is that we're supposed to, we should tell parents, you know, what to look for, how is GPA going to be, going to be calculated? How's class rank going to be calculated? And all the parents of anything but a senior understood that the entire semester would be included for purposes of making that calculation. Now, make one point here with respect to to juniors. Class rank, for purposes of entering college, is determined at the end of the junior year. Which includes both semesters, not just the fall semester. The other thing that I want, that I want you guys to consider is this. If we go with a pass fail, what happens with dual credit? Now, remember, we're on a weighted system. AP courses, you get so many points. Other courses, you get so many points. But dual credit is just underneath in terms of weight underneath the AP courses. Now, dual credit courses, those are, those are, obviously, you have to pay tuition for that. So if we go with a pass fail, then all of the students, all of the juniors, for example, I'm assuming in my discussions with Deanna, and I think she'll, she can address this better than I can, but there's obviously some sophomores that take dual credit, but let's say all the juniors that take dual credit. If we go with a pass fail, we're going to do two things. Number one, we're going to take away, I mean, obviously, they're still going to get their college credit, but for purposes of calculation into GPA and class rank, those points which are weighted just underneath an AP course are just going to go away. The second thing is that that parents pay for those, for those classes, for these kids to take those classes. So if we, if we go with a pass fail, then albeit, they're going to get their credit for the college, for the college course. But in terms of, in terms of paying and paying money as parents, as parents do for these, for these classes, it would have been per nought, because it's not going to be included in their GPA or their class rank. Now, this issue about giving people notice as to what's going to be done, how things are going to be calculated, because of what's happened to us, obviously, it would have been impossible for us to given anybody notice because of what's happened. This was a completely unforeseen circumstance. If we go with, let's just include the, the semester grade for the, for the fall and just eliminate the spring completely, well, we couldn't have given notice, notice for that either. So I think in, in the grand scheme of things, because we treat the seniors that way, in fact, the seniors in reviewing our, the policy that I'm sure Suzanne and probably, probably all of you would have had some, some say so in this thing because it was drafted or redrafted. So you all know that for seniors, class rank or GPA is determined at the end of that third nine weeks. So the fourth nine weeks is not included. But we do allow for the seniors to receive credit for the dual credit, and that deadline is May the 15th of each year. So we're going to do that for seniors. Albeit, I understand that, that, that a junior and a sophomore and a freshman should receive it, should receive a grade for all the work performed. But there's, there's not going to be any easy solution to this. So I think in the grand scheme of things, to me, it would be better to allow the freshman, sophomores, and juniors to get a numeric grade based upon the work that they performed through that third nine weeks, to allow mainly juniors, as I understand in terms of numbers, there's not that many sophomores that take dual credit, but also allow those juniors to get credit for the dual credit that they are going to receive in terms of points. So that allows them, because remember, at the end of the junior year, in terms of class rank, some of them are going to be impacted significantly because of this dual credit. And it may allow them, and of course, we don't have those numbers, but may allow them an easy, an easier, or a better articulation into college when they start applying for college. So I think that we should, we should lean towards doing that as opposed to, and I hate this because it's, it's something that's been, it's been on my mind ever since we had this meeting. And I know Dr. Smith and I've discussed it some, I've talked to Deanna about it. It's a really sensitive issue. But when I started thinking about dual credit and, and having a rule that applies uniformly, if we can do it for seniors, then we should be able to do it for the rest of them, mainly because of this unforeseen circumstances. The other thing that, that I thought about was, and I think Deanna can, can address this, is what about these bio science kids? I think most of those kids are, are, are in AP classes. They're obviously in, they also have several dual credit classes. So if we give, if we give them a, just a simple pass fail, then we're going to take away all the work that they did, albeit it wasn't for the whole semester, it was for nine weeks only. But I think we should give credit where credits do. And we all know that how hard those kids worked to earn their grades. So that's why I'm leaning towards that. So I want to hear from everyone on this issue because obviously, it's very sensitive, as I said, for, for a token few, it's going to be very sensitive. But for the vast majority of the student body, it's probably going to be moot. But I think for purposes of the folks that it is going to affect significantly, significantly, I think that I would like to hear from, from all of you, if you would.
Manuel and Suzanne, I just want to ask a point of clarification. Is this something that we have to wait until we get to that next agenda item on? The, the manual is referencing on later, there's an agenda item that is specifically on EIC Local in the resolution? Or would you like to do comments now? I think this, from my understanding, this was a policy committee report. So just need a point of clarification there.
Correct. So Manuel, I appreciate all the information that you just gave us. We'll have those, that opportunity when we get down to that agenda item specifically to have those in-depth discussions, if you don't mind, so that we can get on with the rest of your report. Appreciate all the comments. Certainly look forward to discussing this further.
No, I think that's probably a better, a better, so that way we can hear what, what Deanna has to say about it. I know that you guys have written it in your, in your agenda packet, but that's probably a better approach to it. Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you. Manuel, do you have any other items you'd like to share with us regarding the policy committee report?
No, I think that was probably the center of our discussion. There may be some after, after Deanna gets through, there may be some other comments that I'll have. But I think for purposes of now, I think we can move on.
Thank you. Any other discussion regarding this? Notwithstanding the conversation we're going to have later. But if not, we're ready to move on to our facilities committee report by Mr. Ty Taggart.
All right, guys, go over what we've talked about in our last facilities meeting. First of all, we talked a little bit, got an update on our playground improvement and additions project. I think we've got a couple of items to consider later in the meeting. But I believe this has been on the capital improvements list for a long, long time. And if you talk to teachers, this was always at the top of their list to start making some improvements to our playground. I think we set the bar really high with these four new campuses. We did, we don't have equity in a lot of ways with our playgrounds, so we need to shore that up. So our recommendation as a committee is to move forward, you know, with the recommendations that we've got, which we can address later in the meeting. The second thing was The second thing was an update on Lake Belton High School. I think Jill did a great job with that. Again, I walked yesterday for about an hour and I just, we smiled the whole time, it was so much fun. They're doing great. Facilities out there, they're really rolling along. Update on our capital improvements list. I think at this point, we've got about 41% of that list that is complete. We've got another 14%, if I remember right, that's just almost complete. And I've got a picture and I, I'm not going to pull it up on my phone, but when I was driving some campuses on Saturday, I went by Southwest and I drove around the bus loop. I looked at, in the back and I saw the air conditioner unit there. That's the only one that didn't quite turn on yet. But I think they said the one day we were testing maybe Leon Heights, it was 92 degrees and within three or four hours, the temperature in that gym was down to 75 degrees. You guys know this has been a big deal for me. I can't wait when we do get back and we are going to get back next fall, I'm just telling you, I believe in that. Those kids are going to have comfortable gyms like everybody else across the district. I was so happy when I saw that. I might even frame that picture and put it in my office at, at work. Then we started talking a little bit about our long-term facilities planning. You know, we shuffle that list as we've gone along. In my three years of being on the board, we've shuffled it back and forth and kind of readjusted our priorities. You know, now with the COVID thing, you know, we really got to start getting with Ms. Land and talking about future monies and how that's going to kind of line up. So the old gym, I think we kind of decided, or we kind of talked about and kind of advised, might be time to kind of just kick that one out for a while. That's about a million plus. That really doesn't have any impact on students and we kind of really thought it was time to kind of shuffle that one on back. Maybe just get it off the list, period. Plus, it's a good storage place that doesn't cost us a penny and it's full and it could, it could use more stuff. I mean, we could put more stuff in there. So that's kind of our thinking. Couple of months before the, the closures, we toured the Agbarns. We were all really pumped. We know they're at capacity out there. We know that's a great program, especially during COVID. I think we've learned self-sustainability is important in these times. It's good to teach those kids that. But I think the price tags that we started getting, some of the preliminary monies kind of may shift that to a future bond consideration, maybe is what we need to look at with that. And then we talked a little bit about visiting some two-story elementaries that might fit maybe a couple of our properties and our, and a couple of our elementaries. And you know, as we get back and we, we get back to where we can be around each other and make some movements, we'll, we'll plan those in the future. That's, that's really all I have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Taggart. Appreciate that. Any board member have any comments or questions about that? Okay. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Before we, before I say anything else about that, I would remind the board, since this is a video conference, then this is for all the actions that we're going to take tonight. Please signify your yes by raising your hand. If you do not raise your hand, then I'll take that as a no and I'll call that out. So we'll have that on record. For the consent agenda, does any board member wish to have any other pull for further discussion? I see a no. Is there a motion to approve as presented? Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Taggart and a second by Mr. Norwood. All in favor, please raise your hand. All hands available, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda. Superintendent's report. Dr. Smith talked to us about COVID-19 update. I think you're a mute, Dr. Smith.
How about that? I forgot to unmute myself. I apologize. Board members, Madam President, Board of Trustees, thank you for this opportunity. This is a really odd superintendent's report and I, I can't say it any other way because it includes the first part, which is just responses to COVID-19 and what we've been working on. And the second part was talking about the superintendent goals and entry plan that we laid out back in the end of February and talking about what we might accomplish. So we're going to go through the presentation of both of those in the superintendent's report very quickly tonight. Next slide, please. We're going to start with our COVID-19 update. Our current status on all of this, as you all know, the governor recently has closed buildings throughout the remainder of the 2021 school year. I choose the word buildings to use at this time because I think it's extremely important to point this out. Our buildings are currently closed and we have to follow all state and local orders in all of this. That means that we don't have staff gathering in buildings and doing work and things like that. And when emergency staff or a skeletal crew is required to show up, we do expect them to participate in the appropriate safety measures to keep themselves safe during this time, meaning wearing masks, staying six feet away from each other and stuff. But we are doing business outside of the office on a regular basis. Second is an important point to that fact about buildings being closed. Learning continues in our district. This is a state requirement that we have. So I think there might be a perception that is out there that when the governor made the announcement, the school is done for the year. And I need to be very clear with our board and with our community, but that is not the case. Learning is continuing. Our physical attendance at school right now is suspended for the remainder of the year, but we do have a requirement from the state of Texas to continue to provide learning opportunities for each and every student during this time. Our approach on that has been to be extremely supportive. We need to know and understand that this COVID-19 challenge that we've all been faced with is putting a burden on families that we do not know and understand fully. We don't know the individual circumstances of each and every student in our system and their families. And so we are working through, trying to make sure we are supportive in the learning environment for all of our students in respecting the fact that they are required to go through learning opportunities and are continuing to go through learning opportunities, but might have very challenging home situations during this time. Our, that goes from everything from our curriculum development and making sure that we're not overwhelming our parents and students with items, to the way we are providing availability of our staff for our families to work with them and to work with the students through their learning. We are issuing grading guidelines as part of policy EIA Local. The superintendent is able to issue grading guidelines during this closure and we are issuing grading guidelines. And to keep that supportive mentality in place, we are going to make sure that we go for this last nine weeks to a fast pass, fail and complete format for our students. Meaning that our students will have a grade on their transcript of pass, fail or incomplete. There have been some things that we can get into in more depth if we'd like to another time. We work with NCAA guidance, we're working with other districts around. We've taken a look at many different approaches to all of this. And we feel like in the time where we know that, I think we're up to 123 cases of COVID in Bell County as of this afternoon, if I'm not mistaken, then we are being more and more impacted and our families are being more and more impacted and our students are being more and more impacted by this COVID-19 epidemic or pandemic that we have. So that pass, fail, incomplete mentality on their final nine weeks grade, we feel is the most supportive way to help our students continue their learning, but to also make sure that they are feeling the support through it all. March 17th, 2020 resolution information, in our meeting last month, we had a resolution that was passed to help us work through this pandemic. And so I'm going to invite Jennifer Land and Todd Schiller to help me with this one. We promised our Board of Trustees and our community that based on the resolution that was passed, that the items that we have actually carried out based on that resolution would be identified and talked about in the board meetings subsequent to that resolution. So I'm going to let Todd jump in and talk a little bit about premium pay and leave and then Jennifer jump in on the contract piece.
Yeah, we did, after the resolution was passed, we did, as y'all agreed, to pay everybody and we implemented premium pay across the district for both work that was occurring outside the building and work that was occurring inside. The intent of premium pay obviously is for short-term kind of a response. So after that week or two weeks on April the 6th, actually, we moved that premium pay and restricted it to just those who were having to come in to the facilities. And that would kind of coincide with remote work protocols that we, that we put into place and created expectations of staff to be working from home. That's when the remote learning occurred from home. On the leave, I will add that regardless of leave, we've been pretty flexible regarding the use of leave as it appears. That March 17th meeting was, was pretty early in all of this and since then, we've got some guidance from laws that have been passed as well regarding leave for COVID-19 illnesses or response. In particular, that leave addresses employees that are quarantined or seeking medical diagnosis and also employees needing to take care of individuals who are quarantined or isolated. And that leave includes two weeks of paid leave. And then there's also 12 weeks of paid leave for employees who are having to stay at home and take care of children who could be there as a result of. We're placing these, these leaves into our practices. These leaves, these emergency leaves that I just discussed, they are temporary. They exist from April 1st through December the 31st. And you know, just like F. Lane, we're going to be mandated to follow those.
Thank you, Todd. Jennifer, would you let the board know around the total amount that we've paid out in premium pay thus far and then explain a little bit of the contract item that we were going to talk about?
Sure. Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Smith. So currently, we have incurred about a little over $50,000 in costs for premium pay. That is through April 3rd as well as for our auxiliary and bi-weekly staff. That time period extends through their last pay period, which was the, which was mid-April. So in comparison to what we had budgeted or what we thought, that is a little bit less than what we had anticipated. And for the most part, we do anticipate that these costs should be eligible for some form of reimbursement, either through the state or some other means. And moving on to our contracts, the expenditure is over 50. We have not to date had to utilize that provision in the resolution. However, we are anticipating that we will have to utilize the emergency approval for an expenditure over 50 related to getting some assistance with our grounds work that needs to be done. We will bring that to you next month as, I guess, a ratification sort of expenditure, but just wanted to give you a heads up that as of today, we have not actually incurred or paid out anything on, on a contract over $50,000.
Thank you, Jennifer. I think, again, reminding our public and our trustees that that resolution on March the 17th allowed us to do some things administratively and we said we would report out on any actions taken on that one. We wanted to make sure that you know that one of the resolution items was, if we get into it, we, we, the board gave me as a superintendent authority to secure contractual services over $50,000 in a temporary manner if we need to for specific items. So we'll be giving you more info on that. I just wanted to make sure you had a heads up. That's the only one that we foresee at this time. Todd has covered the premium pay and the leave items. And then just to point out to our community too, also a part of that resolution you all passed was that employee pay would continue during this closure and that is still continuing and will remain moving forward. So I want to thank you all again for that resolution to allow us to continue to do business that you did that night. And that's the update on the March 17th resolution information. Finally, a current status update is the skeletal operations. Just so you all know, as Todd mentioned, we do have some people who do have to come into our buildings and work. Again, the expectation is it's small crews and doing the best that we possibly can do to keep our students, staff and community safe. We need to continue to operate and support our school district, but we also need to balance that with the protection and support of our staff members. So I do believe we have more fear growing in our staff as the number of cases in Bell County continues to escalate. We have more people who are more concerned about physically going into work and we're doing our best from an HR mindset to work with those people to make sure that they feel supported during this time. Next slide, please. Next step and key decisions is Manuel mentioned just a little bit ago, we're going to get into a discussion on GPA and rank a little bit later in this agenda. And it's a really important decision in all of this. And I want to applaud Manuel and his leadership in our, our policy committee because I think that committee, we served extremely well for us and allowed the administration and the Board of Trustees to get into really good discussions, talk about various outcomes, work together. We have a recommendation tonight and we, we'll get into a great discussion tonight about it. And again, appreciate you all in that. That is a key decision that we do need to make moving forward. Next one, I'm going to invite Ben Smith and Janice Thompson to help me out with this one a little bit. End of the year celebrations and recognitions is a big deal that is coming up loud and clear and has been in our community. And we've been working together as a team to figure out what is best for our students and our community at this time, recognizing the fact that nobody is, I think Ty mentioned earlier, nobody could have predicted these things that we're experiencing right now. But we also know that it, it doesn't mean that we don't celebrate the students and staff in the community. We just have to, might, might have to do it a little bit differently. I applaud Ben and Janice because they're one of the only school districts that I, we are one of the only school districts that I've seen where the principals led a feedback piece through thought exchange from students to actually engage students in a process and pick their brain about what might be the best way to move forward in all of this. And I think that, that says a lot about, one, the values of Belton ISD and focus on students and two, recognizing that student voice matters in items like this. So I'm going to let Ben and Janice jump in and tell you a little bit about some of the end of the year things that we're thinking through at this time.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to start off by letting you know what our seniors told us. So we did, we shared a thought exchange with all of our seniors, Ben and I did. And we asked them, what are your thoughts and ideas about the best ways we can celebrate the class of 2020, given our current constraints? There's a lot of different ways. We looked at the feedback, but the one I'm going to share with you is we took that feedback and placed it in a word cloud. And a word cloud is a quick illustration that lets you know what, what's being said. And the more a word or a thought is brought up, the bigger it appears. And there were four words that really stood out. They were cap, gown, stage and walk. So we value the input of our seniors and we know that graduation is on their mind, but we also know that there are several other events that usually begin in May that we do to celebrate our seniors. And although we know that a lot of these events will look differently, Ben and I and all of our teams, our goal is to keep these events in place as well. So Ben's going to share an overview of these with you.
Yeah. Good evening, Madam President and Board of Trustees. This is, this has been a hard thing for us because when you, when you work at the high school level, these are the, these are the times that you celebrate and you cherish the most. And I know some of you have high schoolers and you're feeling that pain right now. And, and so we're, we're right along there with you. So our goal and our mission through this process is to, to provide our, our kids, our seniors as much of these experiences as possible, just like they would any other school year. So we've really thought through a detailed timeline of, of what events are important to our kids and what would be those things that we would normally recognize and celebrate them with. The first thing is we, we have secured a date with Perth Jones for cap and gown pickups. So we're excited about that. So I know a lot of our kids are, are anxious to get those so that they can have pictures, take pictures with their families in their cap and gown. So April the 30th, we'll distribute those at Belton High School and then May the 1st, we'll distribute at Belton New Tech. Another big thing that, that is, that is huge for our kids is at this time of the year, we'd be doing end-of-year banquets. We would be those kids that are participating in, in fine arts, athletics, clubs, any other school organizations or student organizations. We would be looking at ways to, to celebrate, honor and recognize them. Their sponsors and directors would, would do that. So we wanted to be very intentional and make sure that we didn't lose that either. So we have been in coordination with our directors, Coach Skidmore, Keith Zolke, and then our teachers who were responsible for sponsorships of UIL events or clubs or organizations to, to really make sure that we, we focus and celebrate, honor, recognize our seniors who have represented Belton High School so well. to to really make sure that we we focus and celebrate, honor, recognize our seniors who have represented Belton High School so well. And so we have a, we're going to release a specific timeline of of calendar of when we will recognize each of these groups. We want them to have a specific special day, so it's not random and just out there for, we're really not sure when we're recognizing, want everybody to know for sure, our parents, our community. It'll be pushed through the Belton High School and and for sure, Belton New Tech and B I S D web social media sites, but also our fine arts and athletics. And I know our fine arts and athletics coaches and directors have have worked really hard or in the process of putting together end of year either slideshows or videos, other seniors. And so we'll have additional links to those fine arts or athletic pages to have more detailed celebrations. But it's important that we do spend the month of May recognizing our seniors who have represented our school in such a, you know, a great capacity. Another event that has been special to our community for as long as I can remember, I did it when I was a graduate in nineteen ninety-four, was the baccalaureate. And so we're working and and I'm not sure what that's going to look like, but just wanted y'all to be aware that we are working with those church organizations to see if that's possible. We'll have more information for for y'all once we, you know, get those details and and logistics worked out for that if it's possible. We really hope it is because I it has been an important piece event to our to our school and our district and community. The other thing that we're looking at is still staying in line with our announcements of our Val and Sal. Those will hopefully be the week before our traditional graduation, the week of May the eighteenth. We'll be able to release those through Elizabeth and her team and with the media and what we would normally do. So that should still be aligned with those normal dates. The big one that I, the event, an event that is huge for our district and I know is so important to our seniors, but also to our elementary people is our elementary days. Those those have traditionally been such a wonderful, fun day for our seniors to have the opportunity to go back to their elementary campus, if you will, and and walk the halls and and get to speak to the fifth graders or other elementary students. And those elementary students also get to share or ask questions to the seniors. So and then the the seniors have the opportunity to visit with their elementary teachers for for one last time. It's it's always been a very special, special day for our kids and our in our community. And and we, I want you to know that we are working to try to continue that the best we can in the model that we have to follow. So we have Janice and and I have worked with, we've met now twice with all the elementary principals. And we are in the process of coordinating a plan to to ensure that we can set up a live interactive opportunity for our seniors to visit with our elementary kids via Zoom and and the elementary teachers in those meetings. And then also that I want you to know that the elementary staff are looking at putting together the inspirational videos for our seniors that they're going to post on their social media sites. So although we can't be in person, we we still feel like that that event was very important and special to our seniors and our elementary people. So we want to to try to continue with that. And then moving on along, make sure that where our students, our seniors get their honor graduate regalia, once we've announced the Val Sal honor graduates and all the class rankings are are released. And then also looking at an opportunity to work with Beef to ensure that we're recognizing our kids who have earned scholarships or through Beef. I think that's a, that's a big deal for us and we'll work with them to 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 finalize the, what that looks like as far as that recognition goes. And then like Janice said, we, we are absolutely, at the end of the year, when we get to May the twenty eighth, although we won't have a traditional graduation on that day in line with what we have in place right now. I want you to know that we, we do value what our our seniors and our parents have told us. And and we are doing everything that we possibly can to to secure or to maintain that in-person type ceremony. We've secured several dates later in the summer at the Expo Center already. So those are possibilities for us. We'll obviously have to continue to watch the information that comes to us and follow local and state government health officials and and what, you know, how that dictates a lot of our decisions. However, we we do have plans that we're working towards in-person graduation events for our for our seniors. We also are entertaining other creative ideas too. There are some other ideas that that we're looking at. If we, if if the possibility of in-person graduation doesn't, doesn't hold, we we are still looking at doing something for our seniors so that as much as possible, we we don't have a virtual graduation. That's one of the things that they've really told us, the the message that we've heard from our seniors and our parents is if at all possible, and people get it, they understand, they're they're realists as well, but but they, if at all possible, if we can have a plan that isn't virtual for graduation, we can explore those ideas. So so that's what we're doing. And and our decisions are are going to continue to be thoughtful with our students and our and our parents' voices heard and but also using safety as the foundation and platform for our decisions that we make. So with that, are there any questions for me or Janice?
I'm going to have. Oh yeah, I'm sorry, Suzanne. I was just going to say if the, would pull up my presentation again so we can continue with that and we'll go ahead and go with the questions.
Just a, we were on graduation. What date is going to be on their diplomas? Will it be May twenty eighth? Will it be the possible date in the future? The new postponement date? What's going to be their graduation date?
Oh, and we had to print it. If May twenty eighth is the date that's on the, will be on the diplomas.
Thank you. Board, do you all have any questions?
I want to, before I jump into the rest of this, I want to really celebrate Janice and Ben and and let you all know their focus on students and hearing student voice, as I said, is exceptional, but also as you heard, there is a lot that's planned for kids and all of this and it's a daunting task to work through and they're doing an excellent job working through it. We will serve as good partners. I'm doing my best not to screw things up along the way. And we're going to figure it out and we're going to do what's right for our kids and all of it and keep people safe. So please make sure that when you see Ben and Janice offline, you thank them for their hard work. Next items on here, thoughtful access to buildings. We're working through administrative plans with our principals. We do know that on our, from a parent standpoint, from a student standpoint, people are wondering, hey, can I get into the building and get my stuff that was in in the building before? Mike Morgan is helping us lead and coordinate some of that district wide. Again, we do want to make sure that people have access to the buildings and and are able to grab their stuff, but we also want to make sure that we're following all appropriate guidance and healthy practices during this time. And we'll be rolling that plan out in the next couple of weeks here as well. Clarity and communication is important. I do think one of the most challenging things in all of this is is that is the governor and president and others make announcements. It spurs thoughtful questions from everyone and everyone has a lot of questions for all of it. We're going to do our best to stick to the way we've been doing our COVID updates and posting things on our websites and letting Ben and Janice and our principals be the key communicators with their school communities and all of this. What I don't want to get in the habit of is the superintendent jumping in the middle of key information that is communicated by the principals. So when people are wondering, hey, is Matt going to make an announcement about some of these things? We want to direct them back to their buildings and their our district website and our campus websites because truthfully, my job is to help support and to make sure that we're doing what's right for kids and all of this, but our key leaders in this, their communication is what's going to matter the most. So I just wanted to point that out at the end of this. Next slide, please. Future planning regarding COVID that we have, obviously, we have summer work that always happens. Our teams are feverishly in planning efforts for trying to figure out what things like professional learning might look like, what things like our our summertime work might look like from a facility standpoint. All of those things are being considered by our our teams right now and we will continue to work through. And and obviously, a lot of it depends on when restrictions are eased and when we are able to actually have people face to face. Part of that is that idea of opening business and having a reentry for people. We don't know exactly when the official reopening of our buildings for business will be. But again, as we told our community numerous times, we will look at data. We will look at what our state is telling us regarding guidance and the phase in plan that that our governor has laid out and we will make sure that we're appropriately following any local information through that process as well. We have planned to shift our convocation location for this upcoming year and that convocation will be held at Lake Belton High School. And I want to be thoughtful about this. We, we typically do that at Bell County Expo Center, but also with some unknown items like when are we going to be able to come back and how are we going to be able to come back and what might it look like? Holding a convocation ceremony at our own, one of our own buildings would make things a little more flexible for us. So our current plan is right now to make sure that Lake Belton High School is the site of our convocation if we are able to do it face to face. And provide us a great opportunity to celebrate a beautiful new building that our community voted on and allowed us to open and that our trustees put up for a bond election. But we will, again, we'll also do that with appropriate health restrictions in mind. Finally, we're in the middle of a great discussions with our principals and one of the things that we're going to be talking about tomorrow that one of our principals is helping lead us through is a discussion on the question below, what should instruction look like next year? And I mentioned this a little bit earlier that I think that we would be remiss if we didn't take the opportunity to learn from our experiences in this closing and figure out how we can create exceptional learning experiences for each and every student in our system. And the learning that we have taken place in in moving toward a new instructional delivery model in such a short amount of time, we have learned a ton of lessons so far. So our principals and our leadership team are engaging in questions like this to really help us plan for what instruction could, should and will look like in the fall. So that's a brief update, lengthy brief update, I apologize, but a brief update on our COVID nineteen status. Our current status, our key decisions and our future planning that we're working through at this time. Next slide, please. And that takes us into a real brief overview of my February and March report. Next slide. So I had great ideas coming into Belton ISD and I want you to know a couple of things is that my intention was in March to be able to show you all as a public these goals and these would be my what some some superintendents call entry plan goals. And I chose the term investment plan goals and these were pre-COVID nineteen. But I also think from my perspective that these same goals still hold true even despite our changing circumstances. And so these next slides, I'm going to walk us through. And I'm going to be very brief in this, but I'm going to walk us through a few items that we've been working on to make sure that these goals continue to be realized as we as we move into this summertime. Next slide. Goal one, focused on student experiences. So I think most of you know that I visited every campus in the first couple of weeks that I was in the school district. And one of the key things that we've been working on is trying to really know and understand what our students are saying to us. So I applaud again Ben and Janice using thought exchange. We're doing our best to get student input on things. I held a couple of different listening sessions with students via Zoom over the past few weeks. Those listening sessions were designed to pick the brains of our students right now and understand what their experience is like as a student in Belton ISD during this time and to gather their input. Our leadership conversations that we have been focused on, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, have been really focusing on not just saying how we react to COVID, but how can we offer exceptional student learning experiences even during this time? Because why? Our kids deserve it. They did not sign up for COVID nineteen situation, but yet we believe that learning should continue and that the process of learning, we should be able to provide students an opportunity to engage in that. And so that idea of our leadership conversations and our forward planning is really all built around what do we need to have students experience in in Belton ISD to help their learning continue? Next slide. Few other items that we've been working on over this time. I, one of my goals was to really build a partnership with our Board of Trustees. Kicked off the month of February with trying to have individual trustee meetings and understand more about Belton ISD. We've been working on our regular communication and updates sometimes, so our public knows. I think that our board is tired of our updates because we offer them so often. But throughout this process, we feel like more communication with our trustees allows you to know what's going on from an administrative lens. And so we focused heavily on that. We're engaging in readings and learning together. I mentioned a little bit about a May sixth retreat coming up. And Kay leading us through some team of eight building and a team of eight training and goal development. We've engaged in some readings and sharing of materials also. And then finally, the idea of goal setting, this partnership between the Board of Trustees and superintendent, I think, is extremely important in setting direction for the future. So that next step of goal setting is critical during this time. Next slide. Goal three was on community engagement. And there are a few items here. I'm going to start with the graphic that you see there. So I kicked off the my entry into Belton ISD with a thought exchange, picking people's brains about what are the the key things that I needed to know? What are the thing, the items that they wanted to share with me, the perspective that they wanted to share with me is a a newbie coming to Belton ISD. This is, as Janice mentioned a few minutes ago, called a word cloud. And so these are keywords that were repeated over and over. As I take a look at, I have those numbers right here, I apologize. If I, as I take a look at the feedback that we got in all of this, just so our board and our community know, we had one thousand forty-six participants in this thought exchange. Eight hundred and ninety-nine thoughts were shared with a sixty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-three ratings that were shared by our community during the thought exchange that was held in in February of this year. You see words in here that are very interesting because you see celebrations like family, like support, like small town and and things like that. You also see big words like behavior that are in here and class sizes and stuff. And I think it's important to call these things out that when we ask the community for feedback, we wanted to get the good, the bad, the the challenging, the the excitement, whatever it is that was on their mind and all of it. The information that was shared in all of this, we as a leadership team are diving into, as I said, with sixty-two thousand ratings and eight hundred and ninety-nine thoughts, we have a lot to dive into. But what I need people to know is that this information is helping us and will continue to help us shape action plans over the next year to help, one, celebrate the things that we're great at and continue to do those things, but two, really take a look hard at the things that were most concerning on the minds of our staff. Couple of key themes that came out of that was they wanted the superintendent to invest time and energy into the community and they'll listen. And so I hope that through my actions over the first two months in in Belton ISD that that has come out loud and clear and that we are continuing to use their feedback. For example, in Facebook Live sessions, it's a perfect example of trying to be able to take questions and comments from the community showing that we're invested in this and trying to make sure we are being clear communicators. Other examples of community engagement in all this, obviously, we had the community welcome event at the beginning of March at the Harris Center and I attended some various network networking and events throughout those brief ten days that I was on the job before we left for spring break, but I was able to attend with some other superintendents and in attend in in some of our Bell County superintendent meetings to start to get that networking going. I mentioned earlier that idea of strategic planning and how we continue to hope to bring our community engaged in that process and then engage in that hopes and dreams discussion. So you see things that we've done and things that we will continue to do moving forward. Next slide, please. Fourth thing is team development. One of the things that I think is most important is when someone new enters the school district is that you work on developing as a team and that means with the staff and the the people that you work with. I think it's important to learn about them and also learn with them and engage in real learning opportunities together. Obviously, I mentioned that we have done those school visits and we will continue to do those. We did them physically before and I am currently doing those virtually right now where we do drop in visits and I have the opportunity to listen and to hear from our teachers on a regular basis, what's on their mind, what's working well in Belton ISD, what they're struggling with and what suggestions they have for the future. And those meetings will continue and we'll continue to get those, that feedback through our team and as a leadership team, we continue to have some dialogue and work on shared decision making. It's been a tricky situation and I'll use Ben and Janice as examples in this and talking about the senior events. As a superintendent that was in the district for such a short amount of time, it's important to that I don't screw things up and that I empower people on our teams to help make great decisions in all of this. And I thank them for their leadership because if you, if it were me, just trying to plan kind of blindly what is best for our students and our system, I know that I would mess up. And so I'm very thankful for the dialogue and decision making opportunities that principals, staff members, our leadership team. I'm very thankful for the dialogue and decision-making opportunities that principals, staff members, our leadership team have been supporting me in, in all of this. Uh, and lastly, that idea of shared learning, our learning doesn't stop as we go through this COVID-19 response. We've spent quite a bit of time talking about leadership and management and how we, um, navigate both of those things because we need to. Now, we talked about multipliers. Multipliers is a book by Liz Wiseman that focused on some, uh, work that was done, some research that was done on how we get the best, uh, engagement of our staff and, and uh, actually the best effects for our students. And, uh, we started taking a look at that, the idea of adaptive leadership and how we lead through changing environments and changing circumstances. We've opened a discussion on what central office transformation looks like and, uh, not physical transformation, but in mindset, in support. And do we need to do that? And then finally, we've started to engage in some book studies. One is StrengthsFinder so that we die, we were able to, um, understand each other's strengths as a leadership team and that we will actually be expanding that to our principals and other leaders coming up as well. Um, finally, I think it's important to note that our, our board has been, uh, humoring me in some of those things as well and is engaged in some of those discussions in the book studies as well that we've been doing. Last slide please. The last one, uh, is kind of humorous in a bad way, funny way. I don't know what way, but one of the goals was to create as smooth a transition as possible in all of this and, um, fortunately or unfortunately, um, we weren't able to really focus on some of these things because of the COVID-19 response. But I will tell you that there's been, uh, so much outgoing of support and, um, I believe team mentality that has helped us lead through this that it's been phenomenal. And I want to share real quickly again with our community that immediately upon this COVID-19 crisis, I asked our principals, what are the values of our community? What are the things that matter most that I need to know about as we navigate this challenging circumstance? And they gave me a lot of feedback on it and we narrowed those down into clarity, kindness and unity and purpose. And so you've seen that in a lot of our discussions on Facebook and a lot of our uh, messaging that's gone out, but that's what our principals said based on their experience here and based on what they felt staff would feel and parents would feel and students would feel and our community would feel that we needed to really stick to those things. I think those have been the foundation for, uh, as smooth a transition as we possibly could have expected during the COVID closure. And I'm extremely thankful for the team that we have, our leadership team, our board of trustees as a team and our, um, principals as a team and our teachers for, uh, your guidance, your patience, your support in all of this because truthfully, all of these items here, um, I am here as a, as a part of a team along this journey and your values, your, the things that matter most. And by focusing on the values that have been something here in Belton for so long, I believe has allowed us to manage this COVID transition better than most districts I have seen across the state. And so I'm extremely thankful for, um, the leadership of our teams in this transition. We will continue to work to try and make sure we're face to face, virtually of course, as much as possible. I think face-to-face interactions are important and we continue to try and, uh, hold meetings on a regular basis. I meet with the principals twice a week. Uh, and it's all the principals together. Our leadership team meets on a regular basis on Mondays and, um, as I've said earlier, I'm meeting with all of the teachers in various buildings throughout the system as well. We will be expanding those into our departments coming up soon, uh, and hope to complete those by the end of the year so that I've had an opportunity to see and hear from, uh, our departments and our, our staff throughout the district. Um, again, we, uh, are working through all of this with a lens to have honesty and transparency in each and everything that we do in this transition. Uh, and I hope that you, uh, you've seen that in my approach, but, uh, most importantly, I applaud that approach in our, uh, board of trustees and in our, uh, staff in Belton ISD because I really believe it's been your leadership that has allowed us to do well during this time. And, uh, next slide, I, I believe that concludes the superintendent's report for, um, February and March in a very interesting time, but also our COVID response.
We're having any questions or comments?
Thank you, Matt.
Well, I just wanted to also just go back to Janice D and Ben, uh, just talking about our seniors, being a mom of a senior myself. Thank you all for continually looking for an opportunity to celebrate our seniors. Uh, this is something as we keep saying is unprecedented, we didn't look for. Uh, I've dreamed about my son walking across the stage my whole life, his whole life, I should say. Just that moment about the right dress for it. I'm ready. And I just really appreciate that you all, and rather than using the terms canceled, you're looking for an opportunity to celebrate them in a postponement kind of way. So thank you for doing that. Thank you. We're going to move on to the next item on our agenda if there's nothing further. And that's going to be consider, discuss and take appropriate action regarding a contract with O'Connell Robertson Architects for architectural services for elementary school playground improvements and additional project. Dr. Muller, you're up.
Okay. Good evening, Madam President and Trustees. This item is to contract with O'Connell Robertson for architectural services for the elementary school playground improvements and additions project. We feel like this item is important for three reasons. And actually the slide that is showing is really for the next item. So I'm just going to talk through this item, but we feel like it's important to contract with the architect for at least three reasons. One, the need to have the elements, the new elements of this project work well with the existing elements of the current playgrounds. Two, to ensure that the ADA considerations associated with the new elements are, uh, incorporated into the project. You'll remember that last summer, we addressed ADA across all of the elementary playgrounds, but as we add new elements, we need to ensure that those ADA considerations are, are maintained. And then third, O'Connell Robertson, of course, designed and assisted in the construction of Charter Oak and Charter Oak's playground serves as a standard for the district with respect to elementary playground information. The contract that you're being, uh, that the administration is recommending is a standard AIA contract. We would, if upon approval, we would execute that contract. The scope of the contract calls for things that you have seen before, like schematic design, the creation of design development documents, the creation of, uh, construction documents that could be used in the bidding process. Their assistance in the procurement process, their administration of the owner and contractor agreement during the construction phase, certifying payments to the contractor, uh, creating punch list items at the end of the project and also pulling together warranty and, um, closeout documents. So with that, uh, we are recommending that we approve the contract with O'Connell Robertson for elementary school playground improvements and additions project.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation states approve the contract with O'Connell Robertson Architects for architectural services for elementary school playground improvements and addition project as presented. And I'm looking up and I see, I see a motion by Toaster Taggart. Thank you. Is there a second? Dr. Montgomery, there's a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. That passes unanimously. So Dr. Muller, before you, uh, present on this next item, uh, we'd like to take just a five-minute break. Everyone involved, please just, uh, mute your mics and turn off your video. We'll be back in about five minutes. If that's all right. I think everyone is back. Is that correct?
Looks like it.
Okay, good deal. Thank you. I thought for a minute something was wrong with my audio. Okay, so we will continue on. Dr. Muller, if you will, uh, present the next half of your presentation. Uh, it's very long, but the last couple of sentences say, select a committee to evaluate and rank the proposals. Bring recommendation rankings back to the board for approval. So if you will go ahead and do your next presentation, Dr. Muller.
Okay. If Jamie will bring up that slide. This slide comes from the Capitol improvement project list. That list for O'Connell Robertson dates all the way back to 2015. They prepared, uh, the first Capitol improvement projects list back in that year. It has been subsequently updated. Uh, recently it came to the board in 2018, I believe in the fall of 2018. But within this document is elementary playground improvements. In February of 2020 of this year, the facility committee met and reviewed the information that's been updated and revised from the Capitol projects list specific to playground improvements. And so you'll see on the left side of this slide, there are five elements, all five of these elements become part of this project. Accessibility routes, the play equipment itself, swings, covered playscape. That's covered material, canopy, and then fall protection. And the fall protection we're talking about under this project is synthetic fall protection material. On the right side of this slide, you see a part A, a part B, a part C, and a part summing A, B, and C. In the facility committee that was held on February 19th, the recommendation was made to move forward with all of part A. So you can see the cost associated with part A is $684,000. Under part B, the recommendation was to implement one cover at each of the elementaries. Now, the cost of one cover or one canopy shade for each of the elementaries is $462,000. And then finally, the recommendation included swings at each place gate with fall material for a total of $954,000. So if you sum up those numbers, that comes to $2.1 million. That $2.1 million is a, is a total estimate which includes contingency, fees, permits, surveys, et cetera. So the recommendation from the administration is to authorize the superintendent to issue requests for competitive seal proposals for the playground improvements project, select a committee to evaluate and rank the proposals and bring the recommendation rankings back to the board for approval. We will probably bring those recommendations back to you, not in May, but in June with implementation of the construction, hopefully by the end of the summer.
Thank you, Dr. Muller. Before we take any action, is anyone have any questions, comments? Is there a motion to approve as recommended? Thank you, Mr. Norwood. Is there a second? Mr. Taggart, all in favor, please raise your hand. That gets approved unanimously. Okay, I see Jared and Kurt, they're just eager to start our next item here. Let's talk about our 2017 bond and construction projects update.
Yes ma'am, thank you. Uh, and good evening, Board of Trustees and Dr. Smith. We really appreciate the approval of our contract earlier in the night. So look forward to getting started on those playgrounds and bringing those back to you. Uh, and we're really going to, uh, spend tonight building on that, that amazing report, uh, that Jill gave about building a culture in her school and we're hoping to support building the building, uh, of her school, uh, at this point. So we're really excited about that. Uh, so at a, at a really high level, uh, Lake Belton High School's just over 93% complete. So we're reaching towards the finish line. Kurt's been out on site, uh, following all the right rules, but able to go out and punch the building and give that final list, to-do list to the contractor on certain parts. Uh, and then the Belton Orchestra is at 62%. Uh, and so you'll see there that, uh, you know, the front door is coming to shape and they're catching a lot up as well. Both projects, big picture, on time and budget. Uh, but I'm going to turn it over here to Kurt, who's going to run you through the details of each of the project. And afterwards, we're happy to take any questions.
All right. Thank you all. Uh, next slide please. So it's been about three months, I think, since we've really had a conversation. Uh, these photos are from the January timeframe. Uh, and so obviously since January, a lot of work has gone on. As you look at the aerial, you can see the metal building for the auto tech is being erected. Uh, you know, we don't have any landscaping or site yet. There's just a lot of work that's in progress. And if you'll go to the next slide, please. You know, the, the facility is coming along now. They were able to pave most of the asphalt except for around the auto tech area. They have all the turf install, was installed at both the baseball, softball and the football field. And they were in progress in this photo of actually putting the installation of the track surfacing. Going over to the building, they basically have split it to the east and the west side. So the west side is on the bottom of your screen and that is the education wing with all the classrooms. And that is the area that is going to be completed first. The athletic and the fine arts section on the west will be completed following with about a three to four week lag from the east side. If we can go to the next slide. So these are some of the exterior photos I took just last week onsite. And as you can see, the facility is really coming along nicely. You've got on the, uh, upper left-hand corner, we're looking at the outside of the auxiliary gym where we have the Lake Belton High School signage with the logo. Uh, and that is the entrance that is between the performing arts and the gym. On the bottom left-hand corner, we're looking at a photo that's coming up from the football field into the athletic entrance on the south side of the building. And then the main photo on the right side of your screen is looking at that main entrance going into the high school where everybody will enter in. The limestone that's right there is where the admin offices are. And then where the Lake Belton High School is, that is actually a classroom over on that side. Uh, as you can see, all the landscaping has been completed mostly around the south and west sides and they are coming along to the north and east sides. Can we go to the next slide, please? So these are a couple of the aerial photos that the contractor provided, just looking at the Lake Belton High School, your softball and baseball field along with your football field of all the turf installation. You can see the great logos that are set in the outfield of the baseball and softball, along with the center of field logo at the football. And then you can see where they've got the alternating colors at the tennis courts, which is in the bottom left corner. You've got the red with the black around it. And then we have up in the upper left-hand corner, we've got the turf or turf and the, uh, track surfacing that's been installed. They were in process at this time, which is why you see the white around the football field. And they're doing a flood pour system where they've actually come in and they pour the material and it flows across the entire, from inside to outside of the track. On the right side, we have that main athletics view again, and this is actually coming up from the football field. So if we look over to the left-hand, uh, upper left photo, you see the Broncos and then you kind of see as you go up to the building, we have the slope. You've got your, the Broncos logo there and as you walk up that, that it leads you into the athletic portion. And this is where the football players will come out of the games and be able to parade down the logo on, on each side. There's some staircases to get onto your field. Next slide please. So moving on to the interior, this is the main street and the dining commons areas. So in the upper left-hand corner, we've got the dining commons and they're completing the wood installation along the exterior wall there. That is going to be a tiered seating level. So you have students that sit on the very bottom and then we have this mid-level and then the upper level where they're still completing the wood. You can see will be another set of seating that kind of leads to the main entrance, your admin. And on the top left corner of that is the library. Uh, the bottom left-hand photo is looking at your dining commons and looking over to your kitchen serving lines, which is on the bottom level. And then that big square box that has all those little white squares in it is actually a composite TV system that I believe is 16 TVs that are meshed together that will be able to have different information displayed upon it. And then to the left of that, you're kind of looking out into the exterior courtyard so that your diner students can go on the inside or they can go on the outside and be able to have their lunch outside. Uh, the right-hand photo is just looking down the main street towards the main entrance. Uh, you see the columns that overlook the, uh, dining commons and then we have some seating that go along between those columns so that students can have dispersed seating throughout the building. Next slide please. So looking in the education wing where a lot of the work has been completed, uh, the top left-hand corner, we have one of the super labs. So they have completed everything in this minus. So they have completed everything in this minus a few punch items. All the lab caseworks been installed. Everything's been painted, lights are being tested and adjusted. But this building and on the east side with all the classrooms is coming to a point where it's going to be ready for occupancy, honestly, in about a month, I think, is when your furniture will be able to arrive. On the bottom left hand corner is just one of those classroom wings, looking from the classroom area towards the entrance portal that goes into your main dining commons. On the bottom left hand corner, that's wood. There's a sign that says on this one, I think it's the the line that basically designates the different areas. And then we have that accent paint at those think tank areas in the red, where all your teachers will be able to gather. On the right hand side of the image, we've got our lecture hall. And this is on the middle to west side of the building that is still being completed. Next slide, please. So these are really some of the finished photos going on to the education and some of the athletic areas. So on the top left hand corner, we're kind of looking from between a classroom area into the dining common or into the commons area. We've got a very communal space with a folding partition door that opens up so that allows that classroom to spill out into that common area, allowing your students to do multiple activities. On the bottom left hand corner is that classroom wing that I was talking about. And this one is the springs that has the nice wood and then has the logo there. This correlates to the vinyl graphics that will show you on probably the next board presentation, that'll show some of the different areas that we have designated throughout the building. In the top right hand corner, we're just looking at the competition gym and that finished scoreboard and the Broncos logo proudly displayed over the athletic court. You can see in the bottom portion of that image that the Broncos logo is painted on the actual court already, and it's been sealed and it's ready for games. We go to the bottom right hand image and it's your music room. And this area is still a little bit in process, but it is close to being completed. They've got all the sound panels up, and it's moving quite quickly along that west side of the building. Next slide, please. So in the previous meetings, we talked about the different allowances and changes that had happened on the project. And this is a running log of those that we have had over the last couple of months between our last presentation and now. Are there any questions at this time on any? If not, we'll move over to the next project.
I have a question before you move on. So I probably have already been told this, and maybe I've forgotten. As far as the athletic area, I see this, the one set of stands. And Jared's probably going to know what my question is going to be. I see the smile. That for the opposing team, do we have plans for stands for there? Or did I just miss it?
Can you back up a slide or two?
I have to stand the whole time. We're not being welcoming to them.
Okay, go back to the the gym.
Well, we were there before. There was just the one set, and so just kind of.
Go ahead. So in this image, you do see the pullout bleachers that are on the one side that back up to some locker rooms. And then there are some on the opposite side that we can't see.
Out there. No, go back outside, go outside to the.
Okay, the football stadium.
Yeah, the football stadium. Yeah.
So we have installed the bleachers for the home side, and there is a the potential for additional bleachers being added to the visitor's side. But at this time, that wasn't included in the project.
Potential.
Yes, so there is the space, and it's ready for them to be put in. And the contractor, I know, would love to be able to do that right now.
Okay. I guess I don't understand why we didn't do that, but I guess that's a conversation we can have later.
So in the design process and in the space that Kurt's referencing is kind of the green grass that's opposite the Broncos logo. We talked about the stadium really focusing in on JV and freshman games. And Tiger Stadium would still be the home for Friday Night Lights, in essence. And so that's the that was the focus for this one is a concentrated set of stairs. Both sides can expand not only the length of the field, but then also both sides of the field.
Thank you.
Hey Suzanne.
Yes.
I asked for that a couple of times in the early processes, but really for JV games, everybody sits on the same side. But there is room over on the other side to put stands if that is ever requested or needed at future time. They did leave that space accessible for another set of stands, I think, so.
Well, I just was thinking if we're planning for this to be a comprehensive high school in the future, why wouldn't we go ahead and just put those stands out there down the road?
From what I understood, it was more about staffing, security, things like that for Thursday night type situations. The the stands will hold about 2,000, if I remember right. And that's typically what you get when you do the sub varsity type settings. It really is a cost factor in the long run. And we don't need to build a Friday Night Lights stadium, you know, with just two high schools, I think, was the thought process to save some money also. But we do have the ability, maybe later on down the road, for other folks to talk about 15 years down the road, maybe when number three pops up. Then I think that's when that that the room is there for that, if I remember right, in the planning stages on that.
Thank you, thank you. I'm aging here. I need clarification all the time. I appreciate it. Does this board have any other questions or comments? Nope.
Little thing, sorry. I liked how y'all did the turf around the field instead of putting grass there when we were out there walking around Sunday, kind of along where the horseshoe thing is. I think that's going to be a so much easier to maintain, save money in the long run. Number two, when I was walking out there the other day from the upper commons area down to the lower commons area, in the corner, there's two flower beds right there that were just dirt. Are we going to put rock in there or turf at some point? I don't know that we can grow anything in there.
So right now, those that courtyard is not landscaped. They're currently in progress of putting up the retaining walls and the vegetation. There's quite a bit that's going to go in there. I couldn't tell you specifically in those two. We can look and get back with you on that.
Yeah, I think you're talking about the one that's in the corner against the glazing. And I believe there was plans for some landscaping to be included in that section.
Thank you.
All right, next slide, please. So Belton Orchestra is moving along quite quickly. If we go to the next slide. You know, kind of going back through the construction project and process, we've erected the new building. They were working on the insulation, the masonry and the canopy. And they had done a lot of the work, but there was still a lot on the main entrance that was holding us up. And the main thing there was that Belton logo. So if we go to the next slide, please. So we were able to pour the entrance logo with the Belton B and then the character service and excellent that rings around it. And this has actually been opened up now. So on the top of right hand side, we've got the Belton High School and the entrance canopy. Since these photos have been taken, they've actually pulled back their fence entrance areas completely to the building. There are a few little minor things that they do of the existing canopy tying into the new one. But at this point, all the work has moved on inside the building, and it is actually in the third phase of the building where they are punching between our new addition and the existing band room. So in the lower left hand corner, you can see where they've started that demolition. They've removed the windows that were between those two. And in the meantime, they've actually taken out that wall and have started doing all the demolition, putting up their dust barrier and getting ready to connect those two buildings together. And then the bottom right is just kind of one of those elements on the outside of the building is we have that masonry bench. If you look at the top right image, you can kind of see the scissor lift there. This bench is behind there. And so it's a nice area for students when they're waiting to be picked up, that they can sit underneath the canopy and just mingle with the other students. Are there any other questions on this project?
Or you have any questions? Yep, you know, it never gets in, it doesn't get it old at all. I get so excited seeing all the improvements and the progress. You all are doing a fantastic job, so thank you.
Thank you. It's been a a quick, almost 28 months. I can't imagine, you know, when we first started doing these presentations, that it's been this long. I'm kind of sad to see it ending, but it's a great project to see finished up. So thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, guys. So we're going to move on to human resources. I believe Dr. Smith is going to take the lead, and then Todd will come back and talk with us about personnel.
Madam President, members of the board, I believe from the first day that I met you all, I would, I told you that I would be heavily involved in principal selection and support in the district if I was to join Belton ISD. And I'm honored tonight to bring to you our first principal recommendation. Southwest Elementary School has been without a standing principal for a little bit of time. And it's my understanding that the administrative team, the leadership team in Belton ISD went through some rounds of hiring in the fall. And then we went through rounds where I was involved here in the spring. I think that this is a extremely special school in Belton ISD. And I think it takes a person that is focused on students, focused on doing the right thing, focused on the learning experiences that we can provide for kids, and focused on community building. And I'm honored tonight to recommend that we're Don Schiller be named the principal of Southwest Elementary School. And I want to thank her because I think initially she wasn't really interested in all of this. And she reached out on her own and said, you know, I I've enjoyed this experience and I'm dedicated to this community, and I'd like to be considered for this. And as a new superintendent, day one, when I walked onto that campus at seven, I think it was 7:30 in the morning that day, I could tell that Don Schiller is a life changer for kids. And I think it's my job to help recommend to you life changers that can do amazing things for kids. And I couldn't be more honored to recommend her tonight for this position.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. I believe Mr. Taggart had a comment. No? Okay. So I will move on to Mr. Schiller.
Todd, you.
Todd.
I may never get used to. So thank you, everybody. Hello again. Got two recommendations for you tonight for assistant principal positions. Carrie Berryman is the first. Kristy Berryman is the first one. She's assistant principal for North Belton Middle School. Kristy has a master's degree from Lamar University, a bachelor's degree from Abilene Christian University, has 14 years in education, and all 14 of those years has been with Cranberry ISD. And she's held positions as a middle school teacher, an instructional specialist, and an assistant principal. We're excited to be able to work with her. The second recommendation is Jason Sansom. Jason is assistant principal, being recommended for assistant principal for Belton High School. He has a master's degree from Tarleton, a bachelor's degree from Texas Tech, is 19 years in education. He served as a middle school teacher, a high school assistant principal. And most recently, he's principal in Belton ISD. We're excited to be able to recommend him.
Thank you, Todd. Is there a motion to approve as recommended? Thank you, Ms. Janet Lee. And a second from Dr. Montgomery. Did I see your hand? All in favor, please raise your hand. That is everybody that passes unanimously. Congratulations to Don and to all of our other new hires. Certainly appreciate and I look forward to seeing what they're going to bring to the table. All righty then. So, Mr. Todd, let's see here. You've got some other information to share with us. Go right ahead.
Yes, ma'am. So we're also recommending tonight approval of our professional and administrative contracts. We do this yearly. Administrative contracts, we have 66 that are on the list. Just as a reminder, with administrative contact contracts, you have to work one full year on a probationary contract, one full year on a probationary contract before you're eligible to move to a term contract. Move to a two year term contract, positions that are mentioned in the addendum. Other individuals that are not on that two year contract, go one year. We do have a couple of positions outside of those positions listed on the memo that have been grandfathered. And back in 2014, 15, we moved to the two year contracts for those specific positions. But there are a few people that are still on a two year contract that have been grandfathered that were on two year contracts prior to that 14. In addition to that, we've got 886 professional contracts for you tonight. And we, those are, those include your teachers, instructional coaches, interventionists. Those individuals, again, have to work one full year on a probationary contract. And then if a teacher has worked, has has less than five years of experience, they actually have to work three years on a probationary. Teachers working less with, I'm sorry, teachers with three years, with five years, or less than five years of professional experience, they serve three years on a probationary contract. If they work more than five years teaching experience, then they serve just one year on a probationary contract before they move to a term contract. Those are the recommendations.
Okay, is there a motion to approve administrative and professional contracts as presented? Mr. Tyse Hager, is there a second? Your floor, thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, and so the next item is not for an approval item, but we're just going to discuss a four day work week. So, Mr. Schiller.
Yeah, so this this top, it may seem a little bit strange, given a strange conversation to have, given the the current situation that this is working at home, remote work. But I also think that that it's timely. Especially when we have a staff that's trying to balance work and life, you know, personal, personal life that's occurring at home. So we've been doing a lot of consideration about our summer work schedule, just some other districts. And we are recommending that we move to a four day work week in the summer, Monday through Thursday, ten hour work days, with Fridays being off. We think the, we've heard this from staff over the years, and we think this would be a good opportunity to move in that direction. And it probably would even create some savings cost wise with the less energy being used on that day off.
Okay, again, this does not require board action, but certainly if y'all have comments or discussion regarding this, now is the time. See no takers? We will move on. Thank you, Mr. Schiller. Okay, and we're going to get back to talking about taking appropriate action on a resolution regarding our grading. So Dr. Love Smith.
Good evening, thank you. Yes, tonight we are wanting to discuss EIC grading. Actually, that the slide currently shown is for ELA. If you can go to the presentation before that, there's a resolution. The slide before. And the last time we formally visited EIC for development is was two years ago. We spent about six months developing that policy. And at that time, we had 36 administrators, teachers, parents, and students that were involved. The policy was put in place for the 2018-19 school year for the first time. This is our third year using this current policy. Of course, at the time, the circumstances were very different as we were drafting it. So as part of that, we believe that we need to come back and to revisit it. If you'll. Great, we're getting getting to the resolution. So I think that to kind of lead this discussion, it'd be helpful for me for me to kind of walk us through the resolution. And then we can discuss the varying points in that resolutions. Give you just a moment for that to come up on the screen. Are we able to get the resolution available on screen? Thank you. Great, so let's start with the first piece. On March 16th, as you all may be aware, we, that was our first official date for the closure of the district to protect the health and safety of our students with the onset of COVID-19. On March 19th, the governor issued an executive order relating to COVID-19 preparedness, and through that, all schools were temporarily closed. From there, as a board and administration, we began to implement procedures for the continuation of instruction to the every extent possible during this closure. As part of that continuation, we use policy EIA local. That provides the authority to this, to the superintendent to implement grading guidelines for the spring semester. With that, we chose to use a pale, a pass, fail, or incomplete. We believe that this decision would allow our students to focus on learning outcomes rather than focusing on a numerical grade, given an ever shifting change in our. Rather than focusing on a numerical grade, given an ever-shifting change in our circumstances. As a result of that, we then decided the final grade for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year for credit purposes only. Would be a final average that would be recorded as pass or fail by August one. The reason for this extension is that the state has allowed an extension for us to support any students who are not. Passing a course by the end of the school year, May twenty-eight, when typically credits would be. Awarded or not awarded, depending on a student's performance. So we will use till August one to get any students currently enrolled to, to be successful in their courses amid these circumstances. So based on, on those circumstances, we came back to reevaluate EIC local for the two thousand nineteen school year. So the first piece to note is that is item number one. The GPA will be calculated based on the end of the third nine-week grading period for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand. Nineteen twenty twenty school year for seniors. This actually follows the policy as it was written. This will be the final GPA for our current seniors. So, the, the decision for how to calculate their GPA was set in board policy. The third nine-week grading period ended on March sixth. That was prior to our spring break, thus also prior to our closures. And so what we believe this policy is allowed is for a very clear decision point for our current seniors, seniors impacted in this time. And, and just as a point of reference, EIC local strictly deals with how we will determine the GPA, the grade point average for seniors. That's reported for college acceptance, that's reported for scholarships, and that's their final GPA. And then it also determines class rank. In this policy, because our senior GPA is set. We will be able to go ahead and rank the class, including Val and Sal. The policy does address. It for seniors, that dual credit courses will be taken through May fifteen. If a grade is, a numerical grade is provided. As you know, many colleges right now are moving towards a pass fail. So our policy for seniors protects how that will be handled and we, we feel very good about that piece. However, we wanted to go ahead and put it in the resolution just for clarity purposes. The second point is what I believe, is what Manuel brought up the discussion for Mr. Alcozer in the, in the initial board report. And, and what may be some discussion here. And that was the decision point that needed to be made. For freshmen, sophomores, and juniors. Those are referred to in policy as our class of twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. And so what we are proposing tonight is that the calculation be based on the end of the fall semester. This would affect GPA calculations going forward because it, and currently enrolled in for this school year. And any student who transfers into Belton ISD to join the class of twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. We reviewed, based on the committee's request. We reviewed the data. We did determine, as Mr. Alcozer mentioned, that to run a statistical analysis of how using the. Semester or the third nine weeks would impact students would require an expert opinion and we. Don't really have the time to, to move forward with something like that when our students are needing to know now, especially for. Upcoming ranking and, and college applications. We decided to, when we looked at this decision, we, we landed towards the semester as a use. Because it was the, the last full grade calculation that was communicated to, to all members of the class. So typically, when a grade is used for, for grade calculations, the semester grade is used. A semester grade consists of two nine-week periods and also a semester final exam. And so we felt like the last full piece that we had for promotion, for consideration in grade point average would be. The use of the semester. It also is a clear cut point and a clear way to handle any students that may join these classes for future purposes. And so we will have students that will transfer in and out to us. We know across the state, we have studied many districts. There is no uniform way that this is being handled across the state. It's left up to local districts. So we are seeing districts that will use a fourth, six weeks as a semester grade. We are seeing districts that will have pass, fail, and no semester grades. We are seeing districts that would use a third nine week. And so, so in order to, to maintain. Consistency among, among anyone who does enter this class. Again, the semester was a, was a clear cut. That being said, we do want to recognize that the use of the semester does not take into consideration. All of the hard work that our students have done from January until March sixth. Juniors in particular take the majority of the AP classes then. And we know that students take classes seriously. We know that they put a lot of hard work into their classes. And we do recognize that this would not take that work into calculation for GPA purposes. But we also know that there were kids that were unsuccessful during the third nine weeks. And they were using the fourth nine weeks in a semester to potentially pull their grade to a passing. And so it would not take into account anyone's work in the third nine-week period. If we do use this, then we further go on to say in the, in the resolution. That this would impact all of these classes for the future. Typically, we have eight, eight semesters that are counted into a final GPA and so the resolution would read. That they would have seven semesters instead of eight. And then we would resume the, the use of the policy as it stands, beginning in the twenty-one, twenty, twenty, twenty-one. School year with exception to item number two.
Madam President, if I could add one thing on all of this through. I want to thank Deanna and our policy committee for diving into this, as I mentioned earlier. I need you all to know, this is a tricky situation from the administration's perspective. Deanna mentioned that there is no uniform way that you see this across the state and honestly, that's because. There aren't uniform EIC local policies in many situations when it comes to class rank. And GPA calculations, many districts differ in the way they do that. And so it does put districts in a spot where because of this closure. Districts are responding according to their own community needs and their own community policy and policy EIC local is written. I also need you to know that I, this is a tough policy to talk about and one of the first policy discussions that I've had with the Board of Trustees. Because it's so tricky and I don't know if there is a perfect answer in all of it. Indiana has outlined both cases of, you know, the good, the bad, the, the challenging for us and all of this. And I just want to make sure that I pointed that out because what I've valued about that policy committee and the administration's working so far. Is that we are doing our best to put great minds together, meaning our Board of Trustees' minds and your opinions. In the minds of our administrative team to decide on what is best for our students. You have a recommendation for us tonight and we believe this is the best recommendation for our students. But we also know that policy is where the board lives and it is the board's decision on what to do regarding policies. And so we are here as a support and thought partner with you all in this discussion. And are more than willing to answer questions and, and provide dialogue for you as needed.
Board, I'll go ahead and open this up for discussion. Please make sure you're unmuted. Janet, I see you're, you're first. Go ahead.
Sure, and so, you know, when this was first brought to my attention, I thought, well, I better. I better examine every last bit of this because I don't want to make any rash decisions. I want to make sure I know the facts on all sides and I want to respect everybody's opinion. Because people that I respect have different opinions on this. And so I went back and I listened to the entire policy committee meeting and I took a lot of notes. And I went back and forth and I kind of would go this way and then I'd go that way. And, you know, I'm listening to Manuel talk about the dual credit issue, but my counselor friends tell me. It would not be for not, of course, the credit would still absolutely transfer to the colleges. And for the most part, if colleges are doing pass fail anyway for dual credit. It really doesn't, it won't really impact the grade, even if we were to, to count semester grades as an, as a, as a numerical grade. But ultimately, I think I fall on the side of the administration's recommendation on this because. Students are told that the semester is their average and that is communicated to them. They're very clear about that. Students actually work towards that goal of making sure their GPA and their class rank, if they, if that's important to them. Is final at, at semester and then they work towards something else at the end. But we weren't anywhere near that second half. So, my personal opinion, based on the fact of what is communicated to families, is semester grade. Pass fail is, is, is going to be a pretty common practice across the state, including universities at this point, even for dual credit. And. And that, that it makes it mathematically in regard to calculating things, it makes it a lot cleaner. To try to calculate, you know, one or two data points when you really need more than that in a semester. And then try to calculate that in with something else is, is complicated. It can be done. But when you don't have complete grades, you don't have complete grades. So my recommendation personally is that we fall in line with the, the proposed resolution.
Thank you, Janet. Dr. Montgomery, I saw that you had unmuted yourself.
So I've really gone back and forth and I, and I understand in the end that. Having a pass fail grade on the report card is important. However, we are saying that for seniors, we believe it is valid. To look at that nine weeks and count that nine weeks. And I realize that that has been communicated ahead of time to you. I follow that point. But we find ourselves in a time where we would have never predicted that we wouldn't be in schools. And, you know, I, I'm not just talking about the top five percent. I'm talking about every kid in the school. That third nine weeks is an amazingly difficult nine weeks. Our teachers work hard. Our students work hard and we are saying that that is a valid measurement. To cut off to make a seniors GPA. I don't see how. I just, I, I, I can't rest with it, knowing that juniors are going to be applying to colleges. And that that third nine weeks could make a huge difference in their GPA. And I don't have any proof of this, but I do believe that if you went back and you ran the statistical analysis, you would see that that third nine weeks rates higher than that fourth nine weeks. Just because of AP exams and state exams that occur in the fourth nine weeks. So while I respect that this is a terribly difficult decision. I, I can't rest without counting that third nine weeks in, in the GPA.
Thank you, Dr. Montgomery. Manuel, did you have anything you wanted to add? You're on mute.
I think it comes down also to. Uniformity. If, if it's good enough for the seniors. For us to utilize that for the seniors, I think it's good enough for the, for the other three classes. I don't know, I don't know what the numbers are in terms of what the colleges are going to do, Temple College, University of Mary Bethany. What they're going to do in terms of, if they're going to say pass fail or if they're going to give a numeric grade. I don't, I don't know the answer to that. That's not something that we, we delved into. But I, I do think that, that I want to echo what, what Rosie is saying, that I think that it's somewhat. It's disheartening not to include that third nine weeks, as far as I'm concerned. I think it's somewhat, hate to use the word penal in nature, but it's almost like that work just never, never occurred, especially for those kids that. That are in AP classes. That are working very hard. That would probably have good grades at the end of that first third week, very high grades. Which could impact their ability to, to. Marticulate into colleges. I just don't think that we can wipe that away. As far as giving notice. We're giving notice after the fact of a pass fail. So no one knew about that. We're, we're just in a very difficult situation. That we can't possibly have given notice of anything because of what's happened to us with this pandemic. But I think, I think to me, uniformity. Is important in terms of the application of, of how we calculate GPAs. It's good enough for one class, it's certainly good enough for the other three classes. We've been doing that, I'm assuming, for quite some time. And then if the numeric grade, if there's, if there is a numeric grade for dual credit, then that makes the argument even stronger in my view. So, you know, I think there's arguments on both sides, but I do like the idea of uniformity. And I don't want for all of the work that those kids did for that, for that third nine weeks to just disappear. So that's, 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 that's basically my position on it.
Thank you, Manuel. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um. I gotta tell you, I mean, this whole thing just, it just breaks my heart, right? I mean, just the whole, whole situation that we're in. There's, there's not a single decision here that, that is. The one right decision, right? Somebody's, somebody's going to end up higher, somebody's going to end up lower on those sides, right? So there is, there's not a win anywhere in this, right? And so. And so I've, I've lost a lot of sleep over that piece of it, right? And so when there's not a win. What do we have to do, right? Like, we, we have to fall back on, you know, what is our existing policy? And what is the, you know, and if we don't like that policy, I guess we can change that going forward, right? But, but our existing policy states that basically pass fail doesn't get included in the GPA. Right? And so if pass fail is going to be what we do for the semester. Our, our current policy would state that then it doesn't get included in the GPA. I, I don't, I don't know if I like the policy or not, but that's what the current policy says. And we also, you know, I, I hear the argument on if it's good enough for seniors, it's good enough for everybody else, but. And every other year, we treat them differently, right? So, so I, I don't know, that, that doesn't necessarily hold up for me. I don't know, right? I mean, my understanding is, I, I don't know how, how Temple College and, and. I think it's UTPB, maybe it's the other school that we've got students, right? But, but I think UMHB is allowing the students to choose whether they get a grade or, or a pass fail, right? So even there, like, I, I don't even know how you do that, right? How, how would you incorporate that, right? And so there are so many undones and this is so unfair for everybody, right? You know, there's, there's not a right decision. And so, so we fall back to, what do we have today? And it says, we make the semester pass fail that doesn't get included in the GPA. Like, that's what the policy says today. And so I would probably be in favor in the future of, of taking a look at that policy and maybe revising that further in hindsight. But, you know, I, I don't know, I, I, I fall back on, on, you know, the resolution as it stands, based on the policy that we have today. Right? And, and based on the, the unknowns and, and this is cruel one way or the other, right? I, I don't know how you make this right, but, but it is how it stands. And we've put our faith in the superintendent and the administration to make the decision about the grading, right? To come to how we're going to treat the spring. And, and so by putting my faith in that, I, I then have to follow the policy and, and we can look at it going forward. I, I don't know. That's where I am. There's no winner here, unfortunately. So. Yeah.
Mr. Flor, I absolutely agree with you. This is a heart-wrenching topic. It's just, which way do you fall? I would just defer to our administration and I feel like, well, I know, you know, I've been on the board since two thousand thirteen. And I know that we've got some folks in place that have the heart of the kids in mind first. And I know that they have done their, I feel like, I know that they've done their due diligence and made the right decision for all kids. Everybody is not going to get the same treatment. Some kids will get hurt, unfortunately. Everybody is not gonna get the same treatment. Some kids will get hurt, unfortunately. And I respect all the work that they've done. At this point, is there any other discussion? Otherwise, we'll need to take a vote. Mr. Norwood.
Yeah, I think, first of all, thank you all of the policy committee that sat down and went through this and listening to everybody speak. You know, everybody's heart's in the right place. It is. And there's just no there is no good answer. I mean, that is what we're confronted with here. We need to be honest about that. There is not a good answer. A word that I don't like and I'll use it. There's not a fair answer. It does not exist. I I certainly look at that nine weeks and those kids that did the work and feel like that work is being thrown out the window, that it didn't count. And there's no way that any of us could have known or that kid that this was gonna happen. It would be impossible to know that. I do know from looking around the state, I don't know of a school, and I haven't done a whole bunch of research, but I have looked, I've talked to quite a few people. It seems that everybody around the state is at least going with the pass fail model for this semester. I'm assuming that's the fairest thing to do. I would hate to see us try to do numerical grades through a semester the way it is right now with everybody learning from home. That would be a train wreck to deal with. But I do then have to fall back to something that Chris said and we can, of course, visit it later, and that is the policy as it stands does stay on the pass fail and the GPA and how it's gonna be done. That does exist right now. I don't know that we can go back and you can't go back and change it, in fact. You can go forward and change it at some point if we feel that that's right. I don't know if it is or not. You know, hopefully, this little exercise we're going through is the only time we go through this and we never have to address this again. But where I've struggled with it, trying to understand, but I'll tell you where my heart is in it, is that if we go back to the semester, and I don't like the idea of getting rid of that nine weeks, but if we go back to the semester and we use that as our cutoff point, I feel like at least in that way, across the board, everything is level. Everything was level at that point. There were semester exams that were taken. Everything fit into that box as clean as it's going to, and I don't think it's clean anyways. But I think adding in the nine weeks, because I've struggled with it, because I really wanna see those nine weeks add in, I actually think it just kind of muddies the water. That's just my opinion. I don't think there's a good, I don't think there's a great answer. There's no good answer. There's no fair answer. I was just trying to find the answer that was as clean as it could be, and I still don't like it.
Thank you, Jeff. Taggart.
I've gone back and forth on this, obviously, like all of us have. I'm an old track coach and you don't start the mile race and at the 800 meters, stop the race and start handing out ribbons. I guess that's where I'm gonna end up on this. These are unprecedented times. There's a lot of elected officials all over our country that are having to make really hard decisions. This is just our turn to be involved in a hard decision that's local. I've got two daughters in school and I know they stay up late at night doing their homework and they did that whole third nine weeks. Those grades didn't go for nothing. But I think the policy is there. We need to revisit it. We could just as easily have a natural disaster that could impede on another semester later on down the road. I think we need to put some language in there for those type things. And we need to teach or we need to talk to the underclassmen from now on, saying, this is a possibility. You need to put your best foot forward for the whole semester, not just for half the race. So I think the expectation was we're gonna run the mile race and we're stopping it at the 800 meters. So I think we need to stick with policy. And I'll be honest with you. I respect what our administration has done. I know these people, like Jeff said, I know their heart. And I'm gonna go with their recommendation. That's where I feel comfortable. There's no good answer, but I think that could be the best answer.
Thank you, Mr. Taggart. Ms. Alcoz, have you had something else?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Deanna to clarify something for me. Deanna, on the on the item two where we're calculating GPA in the resolution, item two.
Can we pull the resolution back up on the screen?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, item two. Now, that that, and I want to make sure that I understand this in reading this policy, that is simply allowing the superintendent to to utilize his discretion. But the discretion could also be utilized to calculate GPA by including that third nine weeks. In other words, the way the policy reads now, it doesn't provide for for pass that we can just do a pass fail. That's the way I understand it. In other words, we don't have a situation right now in this particular policy that says in the event of a catastrophe of some sort, like we have now, the natural disaster, anything along those lines. We don't have anything in this policy right now that gives us authority to do anything. That's something that we have to revisit and include in this policy to address things in the future, i.e. give notice to parents and students that in the event of a situation like this, this is how we're gonna calculate GPA. We don't have that in the policy right now. So item two, based on the policy as it's written now, could state that GPA is calculated to include that third nine weeks, just as it just as included right now in item two. In other words, the discretion is there for for either scenario. Is am I stating that correctly?
Yes. So let me do a couple comments on those various points. There's nothing in the policy that specifically addresses a circumstance such as this or a natural disaster. As Ty referenced in his comments, yes, moving forward when we bring this policy back, this is one I typically bring back for review in June with the second reading in July because the policy addresses multi-classes. So we typically use it as a every year to eliminate language that's no longer applicable. We could could, in fact, add that. The policy as it stands does not have that. EIA local is what turns just our grading guidelines and system into a pass fail. So you are correct. Item two could read the GPA will be calculated based on the end of the third nine weeks for those classes. One thing, however, I would add to that would be if that is a recommendation that that will be made, we must take into account exactly how grades would be handled for anyone transferring into the class because many people will transfer into the class and will not have a third nine week grade. So we'd have that that other, that second piece would also have to be taken into calculation. Whereas as it's written now, fall semester, people that transfer, students that transfer in should with all reason have a fall semester grade that was closed for for everyone across the state.
If someone if someone transfers transfers in and that particular district included that third nine weeks, then we get in the same situation, don't we, if that were the case?
No. So if, so anytime we write a policy, we we want to ensure that students who transfer into Belton are treated the exact same way as students in Belton in that class. For instance, if I'm in another school and they they have their PE classes weighted and included in their GPA. Well, we do not. So when they transfer into us, we do not wait their PE classes. And that's just one example. And so what we would have to do is schools, not all schools that transfer are on a nine-week grading period. Many are on a sixth-week grading period. So we would have, so if the language would be is modified from end of semester to third nine weeks, we would then need to also modify exactly what grade would be included for students who transfer in so that they would be treated the same as our students. We cannot create a third nine-week grade for them. So we would have to decide if they have a third nine-week grade that would be accepted. If they do not have a third nine-week grade, do you want to accept their semester? Do you want to not include it at all? I mean, that's where where it becomes very complex. And I think another reason why we did look at semester, but could it be modified? Yes, sir.
What is the, what is the prime, just last question, what is the primary purpose or rationale behind item two? In other words, in other words, in going with that decision, what is the primary basis for them?
Well, it asked, are you asking as to why we chose semester versus third nine week?
Yes, ma'am.
For multiple reasons, because that was what was the was told to all our students. The semester grade typically, when the policy was written, was planned for more along the lines of 18 weeks of instruction. Of course, none of us knew we would be in the situation that we're in now. And then it was also a, the semester is a is a clear-cut number that or grade that is transferable with students that transfer in or out of the district.
So Deanna, I, there's just a couple of things and I think I'm just gonna reiterate a few things that Manuel has been saying. We keep going back to this is what policy says. Our policy says that we are gonna base grades on eight semesters. So tonight, we either make a decision that we're gonna base it on seven semesters or we're gonna include that third nine weeks. So we can't keep going back to the statement of this is what our policy says. It's true that the policy focuses on end of the semester, but the policy says that our students will have eight semesters. So I think we need to be really careful with that wording. Now, the second scenario is we don't know what other districts are going to do. So I hear you clearly that we have to treat students coming in that are transferring fairly. But you could make an argument tonight that districts that are on a semester basis and opted to use that third nine weeks and that student would come in equal then with our students if we decided to do it that third nine weeks. The truth is, we don't have the numbers on that. But I think it just needs to be made clear tonight, whatever we vote on, we are voting on a policy change. We're not voting on this is what our policy said. And I just feel like I have to reiterate that pretty strongly because there were several comments on that.
I was gonna say, I actually have to disagree with you. I'm looking for the wording now, but but the policy specifically says pass fail does not get included in the GPA.
But but we talked about eight semesters. The policy says eight semesters.
You mean a grading period, not semester.
Eight grading periods.
And so if all of the grades for that grading period are pass fail, they don't get included?
Right. Back to seven. Seven grading periods.
Right.
You know, so my my issue with this is you can't use you can't use part of it for one semester and part of it for another semester. Like, you can't put them in both accounts, you know? So.
Well, so let me throw a grenade on this whole thing and I can't even believe I'm gonna say this. Is there some way that you can have the best of both, right? Like, whichever student, whichever calculation method benefits the students, we go with that. Like, so so for me, like, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around that because you then have two different, like, you get two different calculations, right? But it potentially, like, you give all the kids a benefit of the doubt. Whichever way it works out better, you get it. And I don't even know if that's possible, Paul, right? So if if you know, going out for the seven semesters, you know, gets you there, great. If the third nine weeks, whatever it is, great. Whichever one benefits you the most, that's what you go with. I don't even know if that's possible.
I think, Chris, the problem with that is the numbers. So if you did that and let's say we had our group of kids and we're looking at a top 10%, well, your top 10% is gonna be a set amount. It is a set number. So when I use that nine weeks for me, that gets me in the top 10%, but it keeps you out of that one and vice versa, because it is gonna be a set number. So we can't I see what you're saying, but whichever works best, well, what works best for me is gonna have to hurt someone else down the road and vice.
That would not work within our system. I can just tell you that. Our system ranks kids based on the container that we put for the grades into the system. And so to to get that would not work. I will go back just to make sure on the policy, I was going back to look at ESC and maybe there in the resolution. I don't want to put any language in there that confuses the actual policy. The policy never specifies we'll use all eight. Well, I guess it never uses eight as the number. It says we'll use one from each semester. Basically, we would still be using this semester, but since all courses are pass fail, they do not count. So that may have been incorrect in my, in the way I wrote that, but I just kind of wanted to make sure and like, was very clear, it would ultimately end up being the seven that were taken by default, if that makes sense.
Well, I also don't think it's fair to say that they do not count. They will not hurt you. They're neutral. It counts. I mean, if you are ranked, if I was ranked highly and then I failed for some reason this semester, I decided to mess up, that's gonna, I mean, I have failed that course, correct?
That is correct. And thanks for that clarification. They're they're they are, you're held, they're not included in your GPA. They do, it does not hurt or harm you. However, any grade that you received in the third nine week is in fact going to be used with teachers as they're determining your course credit and your work in that course credit. Any work that students were were doing at that time will definitely benefit them as they're taking their, like, their AP exams that are coming up. So the semester counts. And for many variables, it's just whether or not it should be included in the GPA or class rank.
I do have one question, Deanna, if I may. So let's let's look at, let's look at the scenario where we count this third grading period here towards their GPA and the transfer kids. Let's say a kid transfers in from another district. Are we gonna ride it into policy where, let's say if they come from a district where they have six-week grading periods, where we're gonna count one and a half of those for that kid and then a nine-week from another kid? What if, what if, I mean, is that gonna affect the kids that are sitting at, let's just say they're sitting at a certain position in class? They can be bumped by a kid from another district again. If we count this third nine weeks and that other kid only finished a semester in the other, is that correct?
That's correct. We would need to address how to to how to include them. So if they have a third nine-week grade that they're bringing with them, then the third nine week goes in. If they do not have a third nine-week grade, we would need to address what would be their, what grade would be included? Would it be the nearest six weeks? If you included a semester grade for them, I'd be careful with that because that would be an extension past what we allowed our own students to to have. And so we want to be very aligned with whatever is happening with our current students in this class.
A good discussion. Manuel, did you have something else?
Yes, I did. And this is a point that Chris had just brought up. The policy does state very clearly that pass fail is not included in calculation of GPA. But what's not in the policy is item two. I want to, and I think I'm right on that. Item, item, that's why, that's why we're putting it in a resolution, because it's not in there. Yes, it's very clear that pass fail is not in, not included in GPA. But we wouldn't be doing a resolution and adding item two if it was in policy, because it's not. The other thing is that we had, you know, an earlier presentation with the demographic folks and they indicated there were 417 transfers 2019, 2020. Does, does anyone know what, in terms of those 417, how many of those were high school students and how many were below that? So if the transfer, number of transfers is going down and we only had 10 students transfer into high school, then obviously it's not gonna be that big a chore to have to address that. And it looks like most of those students are coming from local districts, academy, places along those lines. So do we know how many of those 417 typically, percentage-wise? So do we know how many of those four hundred and seventeen typically percentage wise, for example, would be high school students versus students from eighth grade coming down?
I do not know how many are transferred, but I do want to make sure that it's not, those numbers we're reporting specifically students who are here on a transfer basis. We would also need to address any student who's joining the class. So any high school student that moves into the district would not be reflected in that four hundred student transfer number, but would, would, would be enrolling in, in high school during that time. And I, I do not have those numbers.
Okay. You know, the, the difficulty is, I want to echo this with every, with everyone else that this is a, this is a really sensitive, difficult issue. And, and just like Chris said, I, I've lost sleep over this also. And I've had discussions with Deanna about it and I've had discussions with, with Matt about it. Unfortunately, we have a situation where one size doesn't fit all. And just like, just like Jeff said, that there's going to be some folks that are going to be penalized and others that are not. But, you know, I still go back to that, to that uniformity and, and I know what, what Ty said about, you know, being a track coach, but you know, sometimes prelims do determine if you get into the finals. So, you know, I just hate to have a situation where especially these, these, these students that are in all AP classes that are in dual credit classes, all the work that they did for that first nine weeks. We have to look at our students that we have now. We can address the transfer students as they come in and I think we can draft things that would apply to most situations that come in and have a policy that would, would address all of that with some degree of consistency and not have to worry about it too much. Because I think that I, I just feel like my responsibility at this point is to protect those kids that are in those, especially those dual credit and those, those all AP classes. And how difficult that is and how much time they spend. There's no way that we could have given notice to anyone about this happening because none of us knew about it. We will in the future, we'll, we'll address it in the future, but we can't address it now. So again, one size doesn't fit all. And I think to me, doing it the other way, it's, it's basically an approach where it's the greatest good for the greatest number. And although we don't have numbers, I just feel like, like Rosie said, I think that the greatest good would be to go the other way in terms of the numbers, but unfortunately, we don't have the benefit of that.
But for, unfortunately, it's not a one size fits all, but because of the way top 10% admission to college, all this kind of stuff works, it has to be a one size fits all, right? Like, so I kind of withdraw the idea, you know, throughout a second ago, like it does have to be one size fits all because it's got to be a level playing field. And it's the only way that, that we can stand behind. Um, like how, how did this kid make it and this kid not? Like it's, it's got to be a one size fits all. Um, and I, I don't know. You know, I also come back to, okay, great. So, so what grade do we use? If, if a kid had an eighty-two at the end of the third week, third nine weeks, what does that mean? Well, if they have an eighty-two at the end of a full semester, what that means is they learned eighty-two percent of the TEEs, right? But at the end of the third nine weeks, what does an eighty-two mean? Right? And I learned eighty-two percent of the stuff in the first nine, in the first three nine weeks, like I don't know. I, I think that's actually not fair to our kids. I don't know. Like I said, there, there's, there's no right answer here. I'm, I'm back to, you know, policy as written, not because I'm a policy as written person. Um, I, unfortunately, you know, I, I think it might be the most fair for the largest number of people. Somebody's still getting screwed here.
Right.
It's unfortunate.
Madam President. You can have that kid that was doing very well for that, I mean, just lights out for that, for that third nine weeks and, and doing incredibly well. And they were all AP classes. And then we pull that, we, we pull that away from that kid, then it's the, it's the flip side of that. So whatever decision we make is, is not going to fit all. It's, it's going to fit all in the sense that it's going to apply to all of the, to, to those three classes. That's the only reason that it's going to, it's going to fit everyone. But it, when I say one size fits all means it, it's, it's fair across the board. It can never be fair.
It will never be fair. I, I'll give you that.
Right. But it's only going to, it's only going to be one size fits all because whatever we do is going to affect everyone. Every, every, every kid in those three classes is going to be affected by what we do.
Thank you.
Either way.
I will just say, I'm living in a house with a senior right now and the definition of the word fair has changed a lot for us. I think what we have to do is consider what's good for the, the most involved.
Thank you. Montgomery, you had something? Dr. Montgomery, did you have a final?
I'm just going to add, let's just go to that, let's go to our top five percent. Okay? So we play in a world where those kids are thousands of a point apart. And so that third nine weeks is huge for them. It, it, in, in, it may be more huge for them than it may be for somebody else, but you know, maybe not. How do you know that for the top 10% that those kids aren't just thousands of a point across? I think we play such a point game and to take those points out of the mathematical equation at the rate at which we ask our kids to study, at the rate at which we are pushing for our kids to be the best that they can be. And that's what a school district does. So please, please hear that as positive. I, I just struggle with taking away that mathematical option that is there for them.
Thank you, Dr. Montgomery. And Dr. Smith, did you have a final thought or?
I did. I just wanted to thank the board. Again, we did not anticipate having this conversation with you at this point. And this is the toughest work of a board. I appreciate your deliberative thoughts. I appreciate your comments and your concern. And I can tell you that the administration shares all of the concerns that you've all said here. And I also want you to know as an administrative team, we respect your decision. It is the board's job to adopt policy and we respect whatever decision you make and we will figure out what is best for our students from there. So thank you for engaging in this tough conversation tonight and for putting your heart and soul into deciding what's best for our kids.
Thank you. Dr. Les Smith, did you have anything that you'd like to add?
No, I echo what Dr. Smith said. Thank you. We will respect whatever decision.
Thank you. Any final thoughts from the board? Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution as presented. Is there a motion to approve? Ms. Lee, second, Mr. Taggart, all in favor, please raise your hand. Those approving would be Mr. Taggart, Ms. McDonald, Mr. Norwood, Ms. Lee and Ms. Flor. Those opposed would be Mr. Alcozer and Dr. Montgomery. Thank you all. Next item, Dr. Les Smith, if you'll talk to us about the adoption of high school English Language Arts and reading instructional materials.
I am happy to do that. The, we are here tonight to, to seeking approval for the adoption of high school Language Arts. Next slide, please. This is, this was a quote that we used in our ELAR adoption last year for our K through eighth grade and it's important as we look at our high school as well because it's especially critical. It requires us to make very specific decisions based on our selections with limited funding. We currently receive instructional materials allotment funding for purchases such as this. But that, that funding also includes technology and other resources. And so it's not always enough for everything we'd like to do. And so we are, we need to be very careful in that selection. Next slide, please. And so proclamation twenty twenty was released in April two thousand eighteen. We've been discussing this for two years. It comes out first from the state in terms of what materials, what subject areas we would be considering for adoption of resources. For proclamation twenty twenty, that is our English Language Arts and Reading for high school and then our E, English one and two for speakers of other languages. Next slide, please. So beginning in this, for this school year, this past school year, it seems like it's been a really long school year. We developed a committee of teachers to review all of the materials that would be presented. Those names are listed as you can see, and they served as a voting committee for what materials they would review and then ultimately propose for tonight's adoption. In addition to the teachers listed, we also had multiple administrators at the campus level and district. Next slide, please. This committee thoughtfully worked beginning in October. They started with reviewing the TEES and the changes that had come out that will be implemented in these courses. From there, they went on to review the materials that were on the list for review from the state. From there, they selected two that they wanted to review in depth. In November, they reviewed Pearson Over My Perspectives and in December, they reviewed material from Houghton Mifflin. In January, they meant to take both of those presentations and what they had reviewed and to discuss it based on a rubric where committee members voted and discuss prior, their commitments for teaching along with how these resources aligned. In February, we also sought public feedback from parents. We had less than ten comments made and majority were either appreciative of the work or had a few clarifying questions in regard to certain selections and we discussed those. Click next slide, please. Based on this extensive review and on the recommendations of our committee of teachers, we are tonight proposing for the adoption of Pearson My Perspectives for our English high school courses. We estimate the cost for these purchases to be four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, two hundred and six, four hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. And the quotes were included in the packet. This will provide both digital and print resources for our high school classes. Next slide. And we just want to reiterate that, that, that we felt like, our teachers felt like these resources would provide the support they need to continue teaching in the, with the expectations and in the model that they are currently seeking professional development for, which is a workshop model. They, and to support them as they provide instruction to our students. Are there any questions?
Or do you have any questions? The recommendation is to approve the adoption and purchase of ELAR instructional materials as presented. Is there a motion to accept? Mr. Flor, second, Mr. Alcozer, all in favor, please raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Les Smith. Okay. You know, for a board who's never done this thing before, we act like we're old pros. We're so good. Okay, so next item, issues, concerns for future agenda or administrative reports. Does the board have anything they'd like to brought, to bring forward for next time? Seeing no takers, I'll just remind you, in your package, you were given an upcoming event sheet. Our next regular board meeting will be Monday, May eighteenth at five o'clock. And I'm sure we'll get some more information surrounding whether we're going to be in this particular setting or, or not. We shall see. Mr. Taggart is shaking his head. He's so funny. So the next thing we're going to do, board, we're going to go into closed session. The board will now go into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Coach subchapters D and E to discuss personnel, Texas Government Co. Section five fifty-one point zero seven four. I would ask that the board leave this meeting. You, we will reconvene in a closed video session. And at the end of that session, we will return to the session. The board is not expected to take any action when I'm discussed in closed section, session. So, so you're in closed session. Thank you, guys. Okay, it is nine twenty-three. We're going to open back up in, open session. I believe we've covered pretty much everything. Thank you all for some nice, healthy discussions. Good, good. Wonderful to see all of you. At nine twenty-four, we stand adjourned. Thanks a lot. Have a good one.
Thanks, y'all.